...a motion that I introduced a year and a half ago. A year and a half ago stating we were in a severe water crisis. We already knew that MWD was going to be cutting our water. You know, it's one of the worst crises we've had in a long time. I mentioned all these issues a year and a half ago. And I said, you know, 70% of all the water consumed is consumed outside.
A very animated council member, Han, contends there's been a water crisis for more than a year, but doesn't believe the implementation of shortage year water rates are appropriate at this time.
...you've done today because I've been sitting here being very frustrated. And I was actually going to vote no on this item because I have before me a motion that I introduced a year and a half ago. A year and a half ago stating we were in a severe water crisis. We already knew that MWD was going to be cutting our water. You know, it's one of the worst crises we've had in a long time. I mentioned all these issues a year and a half ago. And I said, you know, 70% of all the water consumed is consumed outside the home for landscaping and pools. I called on the DWP a year and a half ago to begin to put into measures, whether it would be a rate restructuring or conservation measures, so that the people of Los Angeles knew that we were in a crisis. And that never happened. And so I have a problem with coming today and immediately saying, this is about rate increases. This is about punishing people who are not conserving. This is about immediately saying, we're in a crisis. You're going to pay more if you don't get below 50% of the threshold. Well, that's not the way I think we ought to be doing this. We gotta be... Our people are smart. Our residents, our neighborhood councils, we have an MOU with neighborhood councils and DWP. We're smart. If we're educated, if we're educated, we can begin conserving. I asked several times on our day of water that we had. I said, shouldn't we right now be putting in mandatory conservation measures like not watering on certain days of the week? I mentioned Long Beach that was doing that, not serving water in restaurants. That was like a year ago. And I got blank stares from everybody. Well, good idea, good idea, good idea. What happened today? This comes before... I got this information like yesterday afternoon. I was trying to figure it out. I was trying to read what tier one, tier two thresholds, 15% low. Who would get an increase? Who wouldn't? And I thought, that's not how I wanted us to operate. I wanted us a year and a half ago, colleagues, I introduced this, saying, look out, we're going to be in a shortage. What are you going to do to educate people? I say, put in all the possible conservation measures right now before you begin to hit people with a rate increase. Let's try it. Let's try it the other way first.
Madam Clerk, please open the roll on... This would be a yes vote if you support Ms. Perry's motion of disapproving today. Okay? Does everyone understand that? Okay. Yes means no. Thank you. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on this item. Close the roll. Tabulate the votes. 14 ayes. Okay. Thank you.
And joining us now is the general manager of the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power, H. David Nahai. Mr. Nahai, welcome back to Council Week in Review.
Thank you. It's good to be with you again.
We've just seen a rather lively discussion about water, really, the lack of water. The truth is that Los Angeles itself doesn't actually have a lot of its own water, does it?
No, Los Angeles has very little in terms of indigenous water resources. Around 85% of our water is imported from outside the city.
When we talk about rainfall being 30% below normal, therefore, we're not talking about within the city limits of Los Angeles, are we?
No, no, we're not. Actually, the 30% number refers to the runoff from melting snowpack in the eastern Sierras. As the snow in the eastern Sierras melts, the runoff finds its way into the Los Angeles aqueduct, which in turn brings that water down to Los Angeles. So when we say that things are 30% below normal, what we're really talking about is the runoff.
And while we do have that aqueduct system delivering water from the north, while we may own the aqueduct, we don't necessarily own the water that it delivers, do we?
Well, you know, the water that comes down the Los Angeles aqueduct is water that comes to LA exclusively. But it's not our only source of water. We also get water from the Colorado River. And we get water from the state water project, which brings the water down from the Sacramento Delta. Now, those two sources of water actually go to the Metropolitan Water District, which then distributes it to 26 water agencies, of which Los Angeles is the biggest. And that water, we do have to pay for.
So MWD is really the regional broker for water?
MWD is a substantial source of water to Los Angeles at this point.
When you talk about a perfect storm of water resource problems, what do you mean by that?
I'm talking about a confluence of events which have brought about the water crisis that we face. We're talking about low snowpack in the eastern Sierras, a very erratic pattern which has resulted in three years of really exceptionally low snowpack. I'm talking about a cutback of as much as 80% from the Sacramento Delta due to environmental challenges and court rulings, which mandate a very, very drastic reduction. I'm also talking about contamination problems with respect to our own underground aquifer here in Los Angeles, which has also constrained water supplies even from our own local resource. And of course, the Colorado River has been in a drought now for about eight years and may just be emerging from that. So it's all of these factors, it's a combination of all of them, that has led us to this place that mandates extensive conservation as well as all other short-term and long-term measures that we have to take in order to provide for the future of the city.
All right, let's move on to where the water hits the tap. You've got tier one, tier two, upper limits, rate increase, 15% reduction. Could you sort all this out for us? Why the two tiers? Who falls into what tier?
Well, the two tiers have been with us for a long time. The two tiers were established back in 1991 when a Blue Ribbon Committee was empaneled in order to take a look at the water rates and come up with a system. As a result of it, there are 15 classifications in the residential area. And we each have a tier one and a tier two. And tier one really takes into account all kinds of different factors, including lot size, family size, temperature zones, and so forth. And tier one is set at a particular rate, really quite low, given the fact that we do live in a semi-arid region and 85% of our water comes from the outside. Tier two is more expensive water in terms of the commodity price, if you like. The concept of shortage year rates, which was before the council, is really quite simple. What this concept says is that the upper limit of tier one would be reduced by 15%. Thus, if somebody is at the very upper limit of tier one, they would have to reduce their consumption by 15%. Otherwise, they get put into tier two, which is the more expensive category for the water. This is what incentivizes conservation. This is the device that is utilized. I should also add that this concept, this methodology, if you like, isn't new. It was actually devised back in, back at the time of the last drought, which was 1991, 1992 timeframe. It just hasn't been enacted. And what we're seeking to do is to enact it at this time.
One of the council members also asked the question quite directly. Why don't we just set a simple, albeit higher, rate for water and do away with the tier system altogether? You just mentioned incentives as one reason.
Well, I understand the council member's statement and suggestion. And we will be going back to the council with some suggestions for a revision in the rate structure. But if we take a look at history and take a look at how long it took in order to arrive at the present structure, we'll realize that this is no simple matter. And I don't think it is something that will take place in a short timeframe. In the meantime, we have a crisis that we have to deal with right now. We have to cut back our water use. There are no two ways about it. So at the present time, we have to deal with the cards that we have, with the system that we have. And we have to make the changes that we can in order to encourage and, in fact, more than encourage, mandate conservation. The shortage year rates is a device that enables us to do that within the system that we have at the present time without having to completely overhaul a system that's been in place now for nearly two decades and which I would readily concede deserves to be revisited. But that'll, I think, be a long and quite complex process.
I'm sure it's occurred to more than one person. If 94% of the tier one customers would not see an increase, can we get enough conservation out of the other 6%?
Yes, we believe we can. Now, even the 94%, though, it depends where in tier one they fall. If they are right at the very upper limit of tier one, we are asking them to reduce. But those customers who have already been conserving, those customers who are already below the 15% threshold would see no change. And as a matter of fact, those who do conserve would see their bills go down. So yes, most of our customers don't use beyond tier one. But remember, we're talking about reducing the upper ceiling of tier one by 15%. So it's that constraining that would cause people to reduce if they're at those upper limits.
As it turns out, I happen to be one of those people who's been conserving like crazy for the last several years. So I might actually see my water bill go down.
You might. And by the way, a call to 1-800-DIAL-DWPP to the call center. And after May 1st, a visit to the LADWP website, which is ladwp.com, will enable you to see what your tier one allotment is, what your water usage is, and you'll be able to determine from there whether you need to cut back and how much.
You also made reference to implementing a phase three of the water conservation ordinance. Can review of all the phases of that ordinance, can you say it quickly enough and clearly enough so we can fit it into the program for our viewers?
Well, phase one is already in effect. And the phase one lists a number of prohibited uses. And most of them are very common sense. Don't, you know, wash down your yard. Don't have your sprinklers run so extensively that they actually, you know, wash down the pavement. If you're going to wash your car in your front lawn, make sure you have a shut-off muzzle. Don't water outdoors between the hours of 9:00 and 4:00, 9:00 in the morning, 4:00 in the afternoon. If you're a restaurant owner, don't serve water to patrons unless they specifically ask for it. Really common sense measures of that kind. Phase two would reduce outdoor conservation to only three days a week. But the circumstances are such that we need to jump from phase one, where we are right now, to phase three. And the difference with phase three is that it prohibits outdoor water use, outdoor sprinkler use, I should clarify, except for Mondays and Thursdays. That has been adopted by the Board of Water and Power Commissioners, but it has not yet been adopted by the City Council. It's wending its way through to the council for consideration.
And of course, you have a number of programs available to help customers explain the low-income and lifeline programs. If you will, you mentioned, I think, the phone number and the website. Anything else?
Yes, I really would encourage a visit to the website in particular, where our customers will find an entire array of rebates and incentives. For instance, clothes washers use a great deal of water. If our customers will switch to a water-efficient clothes washer, DWP will give them a $250 rebate. There are many other rebates of that kind, many incentives for people to, at the same time, reduce their water consumption and reduce their bills. And we've recently introduced a new rebate program that has to do with outdoor landscaping. So our customers will soon find that switching to drought-resistant plants, to native plants, will actually, again, help them reduce their outdoor water consumption and their bills at the same time. And this is in recognition of the fact that, on the residential side, about 40% of our water use is outdoors. So by tackling the outdoor use, by cutting back our outdoor sprinkler use, we'll be able to both meet this 15% reduction target for those who are at the upper tier of tier one and, at the same time, take care of our pocketbooks as well.
Also mentioned on the council floor, of course, water recycling. And I imagine that had some viewers scratching their heads, saying, wait a minute, once I've used the water, it's down the drain, it's gone. How does that work?
Well, this is something that we must change and which societies around the world have changed. In many countries, they recycle most of their wastewater and reuse it for irrigation and for drinking purposes and do it very safely and in a way that's proven. In Orange County, there is a very successful recycling program for potable use. And it uses state-of-the-art technology, reverse osmosis, microfiltration, ultraviolet radiation. And then that water, once so treated and cleansed, is transported to spreading grounds where it's allowed to percolate through the soil for additional cleansing as well. It then blends with already existing groundwater and sometime later is extracted and treated and tested again before it is served as very, very high-quality water. In LA, we recycle really very little. And we treat our wastewater to a high degree, what's called secondary and tertiary levels, only to dump it in the ocean. That is a waste that we should all find intolerable. And what we need to do is to move forward in a way that enables us to reuse that water, as I say, both for irrigation, for parks, golf courses, other outside uses, but also in appropriate circumstances for drinking purposes. We have the technology. I believe we have wide acceptance on the part of the public, and we must move in that direction. This is the way that we will provide for the future of the city.
Very comprehensive and very compelling. If our viewers have questions, if they want to know what their water allotment or water usage is, one more time, how can they get all that information?
1-800-DIAL-DWPP and also our website, ladwp.com.
David Nahai, general manager of the Department of Water and Power. Thanks for coming in and joining us on Council Week in Review.
Thank you very much. It's been a pleasure being here with you.
We are in a drought, and we must all do our part to save water. Now, if you need assistance in paying your bill or want to take advantage of one of the rebate programs offered by the Department of Water and Power, you may also dial 311, your one call to City Hall. You can listen to city council meetings as well as committee and commission meetings on the telephone by using the city's council phone system. In the downtown area, dial 213-621-CITY. In West LA, dial 310-471-CITY. For the San Pedro area, dial 310-547-CITY. And in the San Fernando Valley, dial 818-904-9450. Just follow the recorded instructions for the meetings you want to hear. And we invite you to address the Los Angeles City Council on any item on the council agenda as well as during public comment. You may come downtown to City Hall or go to either the Van Nuys City Hall or the San Pedro City Hall and participate via video teleconferencing. And you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, beginning at 10:00 a.m. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at 10:00 a.m. Council Week in Review can be seen Monday through Friday at 9:30 a.m. and 6:30 p.m. And on Sunday at 9:30 a.m. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending April 10th, 2009. On behalf of Monty Duarte and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Jack Popejoy. Thank you for watching, and please join us for next Council Week in Review.
You know, honey, I've been thinking. You're not prepared for an earthquake. Take this antique vase your mom got you. If the big one hit, be a goner. Or this clay penguin you made in third grade. History. By simply strapping loose furniture to the wall and putting putty under loose items, you can prevent serious injury and damage. Nothing is safe, even poor Uncle Peedy. Get the message? Be prepared.
LA City View, Channel 35.
Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the city council meeting for Friday, the 17th of April, 2009. We're here in the John F. Rau Council Chambers, Room 340 of City Hall, where we meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. We are here each of our meetings, except for the first Friday of the month in which we meet in Van Nuys City Hall. We are currently at seven members. We need 10 to constitute a quorum, or two-thirds of our 15-member body. I want to thank those council members who are here pursuant to council rules on time. Council members Gruel, Han, Wizar, Perry, Rosendahl, and Zine, with myself, Council Member Garcetti. We are at seven. We have a couple of council members we are not expecting today. They're excused. That's Council Member Cardenas, Council Member Parks, Council Member Weiss. And Mr. Reyes is expected at 10:30. That leaves Mr. Alarcon, Mr. Labange, Mr. Smith, and Mr. Wesson, if you'll please join us as soon as possible. In the meantime, we want to welcome those members of the public that are here in council chambers, those who are in our Van Nuys and San Pedro chambers as well, and I'd like to welcome our viewers on Channel 35. These meetings are broadcast live throughout the cable system of the city of Los Angeles on Channel 35, City View, and they are rebroadcast in the evening. We are also available online, if that's more convenient for you, at lacity.org, which incidentally is our city's homepage and has a wealth of information on city services and departments, elected officials, and ways to improve the quality of your life here in the city. Finally, if you're not close to a television or your computer, you can always use telephone to call in and listen to the city council meetings. That's called a council phone, and the telephone number is 213-621-CITY. That's 213-621-CITY. And you can listen not only to our council meetings, but any of our committee meetings as well. We have our agendas available online and here in person. Those are made available 72 hours in advance or 24 hours in advance for our special items. All items will receive a public hearing either in committee or in the full council. We have cards in the back that you can fill out on any of the items. If it's an item that's not yet had a public hearing, that will trigger an automatic public hearing. For items that have already had a hearing in committee, it would require a council member to reopen the public hearing to hear further comments. We also have a section of the meeting called General Public Comment. So that is for any items that are not on the agenda but nevertheless part of city business. And you can also fill out a speaker card and hand that to one of the sardines at arms. We'll be sure to include you in the mix. Fridays are special days here in the council chambers where we honor important folks from the city of Los Angeles or organizations or notable occasions. I see we've got some of our guests here already, a bunch of students that are here in the front rows, and we welcome you all to council chambers. And we will be beginning with our presentations momentarily. We have seven presentations today, and we have a timer for each presentation of six minutes. If we can ask council members to please do their best to abide by that six-minute clock to make sure we can get to our public comment. For folks who are awaiting the general meeting and put cards in for General Public Comment, which usually kicks off our meeting, I anticipate that'll start around 11:15 to 11:30. So again, thank you for your patience. We're still awaiting a quorum to remind council members Alarcon, Council Member Labange, Council Member Smith, and Council Member Wesson. If they'll please join us as soon as possible, we can run through the agenda items that are not called special and begin the presentations momentarily. So thank you again, everybody, for your patience. As soon as we have those council members and folks ready for the presentations, we will begin. Thank you. I'd like to recognize for our first presentation, the council member from the 14th district, Jose Wizar.
And as our young people come up here to the podium, I wanted to start my presentation, but I also wanted to call up here to join me is our great superintendent from the Los Angeles Unified School District, a no stranger to these chambers. Let me invite up here Superintendent Cortinez, if you could please join me up here. Thank you for being with us. Give him a big round of applause. Superintendent Cortinez, thank you for being here with us. And ladies and gentlemen, I'm really excited today to present to you a very, very special young people from the Boyle Heights community. And I'm excited to be joined by a group of students called the Society of Students, a group of truly special young people who help other young people in their school become leaders. The Society helps turn elementary students into leaders in their schools, and they are responsible individuals in their families and in their community. The program builds social capital among youth by strengthening student character and resiliency. It is truly gratifying for me to welcome them to City Hall and to acknowledge the great work they are doing. The students here today represent four schools: Utah Street Elementary, Soto Street Elementary, First Street Elementary, and also Breed Street Elementary. Each of the students here today has made a pledge for themselves to succeed in life. And let me tell you, I cannot tell you how proud I am of these young people. I first met SOS when I was a school board member, and the students wanted to meet with me. And I went down to Breed Street Elementary School, and the students just floored me. They floored me because these were young, intelligent people that were being prepared to be leaders. But they were being prepared to be leaders by having their goal of giving back as their number-one goal. And so I wanted to bring them to chambers, to congratulate them, to thank them, and to encourage them to keep doing what they're doing. Because after all, these young people are the young ones who hopefully will come back to their community, who will hopefully come back to the city of Los Angeles after their collegiate experience and give back. That's what they have, that is their model, and that is what they hope to achieve. So ladies and gentlemen, let me show you what we have here. I'm going to ask two of the students from each of the schools to come up and briefly share some remarks. The first students I have here are Joshua Mejia and Rocío Sanchez from Utah Street Elementary. Can you guys step up?
My name is Joshua Mejia.
Hi, my name is Rocío Sanchez. We are here to have special thanks to Jose Wizar for making this possible for us, and another special thanks for the council president, Garcetti.
We want to thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for letting us be here today and letting us speak what we have in mind.
We are also from SOS, but me and Rocío...
We are also from SOS, but me and Rocío and I have been through many obstacles. Like, when I was young, I was a bully, and SOS taught me to be an AP student.
I was also a bully, but somebody changed my life, and now I want to do the rest with others. I want to help people out. I want to make a difference in this world. I want to, I want to help other people who need help, and that's what I was taught.
We also have Guadalupe Murillo and Rosa Javier from Soto Street Elementary.
Hi, my name is Rosa Javier.
Hi, my name is Guadalupe Murillo.
And I'm so thankful that you guys took your time from working to give the time to us.
We really want to thank you guys for seeing the leaders, and you guys have been treating us like if we were the leaders, if we were adults. We really thank you guys, and we'd like to thank Mr. Wezar and the President Garcetti.
And the Councilman.
No. Thank you.
Thank you. From First Street School, Julia Uyora and Gustavo Orozco.
It is an honor to be here, and we are very proud to be here and speak to you, and a special thanks to Superintendent for being here, and Jose Wezar for being here and taking time out of her busy schedules.
Hi, my name is Julia, and thank you for supporting us in our school, and I just want to say that whatever you guys can do, I know that us kids can make a difference too.
And last, and not least, where this program started, Breed Street Elementary, Edgar Santos and Angel Santos.
Hola, my name is Edgar Santos.
Hola, my name is Angel Santos.
I will represent SOS from the schools Breed Street, Utah, First Street, and Soto, with a thanks to President Garcetti, and a special thanks to Councilman Wezar, and thanks to all the council members. SOS changed my life ever since I joined in the first grade. It made me become one face which is to be AP at all times. Since I joined SOS in the first grade, it changed my entire life forever.
Colleagues, I know we were pressed so tight, so these young students were, there it is, right perfectly, these young students came up just to give a thanks, as they wanted to do, to all of us for the work we do. But let me tell you, I know sometimes we see young people do things and we get emotional, and that was my first experience with these young people, when they explained to me how we can all work together to improve our communities. And these were ideas and solutions that the students came up with themselves. They were practical and reasonable, and hopefully we will continue to support SOS. These are young people who show positive things in Boyle Heights, a great community that we have. But I wanted at this time to acknowledge all the adults who are making this possible. They go out of their way and out of their regular duties that they have each day at their schools to support these young people and this program. It's something additional that they started on their own, and it continues to spread in Boyle Heights. So let me go quickly through the list of adults and supporters of this program. We have Pat Castro, principal at Utah Elementary, Carolyn Kavner, counselor at Utah, Alvar Reyes, principal at Soto, Jeffrey Jumisco, teacher, Kamau Madadi, principal at Breed Street, Josie Avila, SOS coordinator at Breed Street, Chloé Perilla, SOS coordinator at Breed Street. And I wanted to give a special thanks to Lester Garcia, the executive director of the Boyle Heights Learning Collaborative. And finally, Mr. President, if you'd just give me one more minute here, I wanted to acknowledge the founder of this program, a very, very special person that embodies what it means to be a great, great teacher. And I know that many of us could point to one or two of those teachers who've made a difference in our lives, and I know that many of these young people you see here today, and many others that she has inspired and motivated, will be thinking about her for the rest of their lives. She founded the SOS program. She is a caring individual. I wanted to give her a certificate of recognition to thank her for the wonderful work she has done. Ladies and gentlemen, please give a warm welcome to Janice Yura.
No, thank you. This is against everything I believe in. These are the kids, these are the leaders, they are everything. So please forget you saw me, and the kids are everything.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. The young boys and girls here, keep doing what you're doing. We need your life experience, your knowledge, your leadership in our communities, no matter what you decide to do, whether it's a teacher, a police officer, or the CEO of one of the biggest corporations in America, we need your talents. Keep doing what you're doing. Thank you very much.
And before they leave, Mr. Wezar, Mr. Labange wants to add his good wishes. Mr. Labange.
You gave a great speech right there, and Janice, great job. It is about the children, but it takes a leader like you and our great superintendent who's here, which is special. But you talked about a teacher, and a doctor, and a lawyer. How about a councilperson? I think these guys right up there are those young ladies. Good job, Mr. Wezar, Mr. Superintendent. Great job, Mr. Cortinez.
Thank you.
They could also be a superintendent, right?
That's right.
I want every little competition for you there, Jose.
Well, that's a, you know, these guys are talented. They might be my competition.
They don't want that much stress.
Thank you, Mr. Cortinez, for being here. This shows your commitment to our young people at all levels. So thank you, Mr. Cortinez, for being here. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd like to recognize Mr. Wezar for a second presentation as well.
Thank you, Mr. President. And good morning. It is with great excitement that I stand here with Chapo de Sinaloa, the Grand Marshal of the 20th Annual AT&amp;T Fiesta Broadway, and Anita Gabrielian, the executive president of External Affairs for AT&amp;T. And I wanted to be here today to announce that we are celebrating the 20th annual celebration on Broadway with Fiesta Broadway. And we have boasted a great lineup this year, as every year, with some of the top performers from throughout Mexico to celebrate Cinco de Mayo, one of the largest celebrations of Cinco de Mayo that we have in the United States, is actually celebrated right here in Los Angeles. And so for me, as someone of Mexican descent, having been born in Zacatecas, Mexico, my family and I look forward to this year, to this event each and every year, and so I'm excited that once again we could celebrate this event here in downtown Los Angeles. And like every year, we have some of the top talent. This year, we have, as I mentioned, El Chapo de Sinaloa, and Paquito del Barrio, Flex, Rogelio Martinez, Graciela Beltrán, Peewee, Ninel Contem, Banda Machos, and many others. These incredible artists, without a doubt, will give us a great event. So I invite everyone to come out, April 26. Last year, there were over 500,000 people who attended this event. There's great food, great music, and more than everything, it's a great way for all of us to come together and celebrate a great Mexican holiday. So ladies and gentlemen, I wanted at this time to invite up a representative from AT&amp;T who I think was here and is no longer here, but I want to give my thanks to AT&amp;T for them being, for being a corporate sponsor this year. And I wanted to invite up El Chapo de Sinaloa to share a few words with us. I'll say a little bit more about him after he speaks. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Gracias. Bueno, yo voy a hacerlo en español porque el inglés con estos nervios se me va a escapar.
I'm going to say it in Spanish because my English may escape me.
Para mí es un gran honor que me hayan nombrado el Gran Mariscal y que me hayan dado esta oportunidad para asistir a la Fiesta Broadway, para cantarles todas mis canciones, toda mi música, a mi gente mexicana.
It's a great honor for me to be named the Grand Marshal and to be part of the Fiesta Broadway event, and so I could sing to the public my songs.
Muchas gracias una vez más, y es un placer compartir con tantos compañeros artistas, que es para mí un gran honor pues trabajar junto con tantos compañeros.
Viva, gracias. Thank you. And with us today as well is Cesar Brizuela and Yolanda Pérez, two of the performers going to be there. Let's give them a big, warm welcome, and thank you for being with us. And I wanted to recognize the achievements of El Chapo de Sinaloa, and I wanted to give a little bit of background as we do this. In the 1990s, Chapo de Sinaloa signed with EMI Latin and launched a solo career. Since then, he has released over a dozen albums, which have been successful both in Mexico and the United States. His 2007 album, Te Va A gustar, was his most successful in America and was nominated for a Latin Grammy. This year, our honored guest was nominated for a 2009 Latin Billboard Music Award for Greatest Hits Album of the Year for La Historia. El Chapo and his hit, Maldita Licor, is enjoying, maldito, maldito licor, is enjoying wide airplane, and now we are lucky to give him, have him as the Grand Marshal for Fiesta Broadway. In recognition of that, I wanted to present to him a certificate of recognition from the City of Los Angeles. El Chapo, muchísimas gracias por todo y felicidades por todo el éxito. Gracias. Thank you.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Just before recognizing Mr. Alarcon, I think Mr. Smith wanted to make a quick introduction. Mr. Smith, there you are. If not, why don't we recognize then Mr. Alarcon for our next presentation.
Did you have an introduction? Did you have an introduction? Good morning. As you know, once a month, I try to identify people who are doing good work to make our children safe, and we've recognized numerous organizations, including some that are standing with us today. So as part of that effort, it is my pleasure to announce National Child Abuse Prevention Month in the City of Los Angeles, that this resolution, which is signed by all the council members and Mayor Villarreal, is reflective that today is a time for awareness, for information, to expand the knowledge of protecting our children against child abuse. We sometimes look at the glamorous situations of child abuse that come out on the news and ignore some of the subtle cases of abuse. Well, it is not something that should be ignored. So with that, I'd like to give us the opportunity to see a message that has been produced, a PSA on child abuse. It's a 30-second message, and we would like to make this the world premiere of that message. Are we ready? It is estimated that one of these five girls will be sexually abused before they turn 18. Child abuse happens, and you can stop it. Speak out for a child by calling 911. End the silence.
Call 911.
Childhood shouldn't hurt. If you suspect any type of child abuse, please call 911. Help keep our children happy and safe. You can end the silence. And yes, to my left is little Alyssa Barajas, who was instructing people to call 911. She also does it bilingually, in Spanish, and, llame nueve once, correcto? No?
No. Porque no.
Llame a nueve.
Oh, I see. Gramatica. She said, no, nueve, llame a nueve once. Thank you very much for that correction. Now I'm totally flustered and embarrassed. So you just saw the world premiere of the new PSA on child abuse, and why are we premiering it now? Because April is National Child Abuse Prevention Month nationally, but of course in Los Angeles as well. Today, we have some very special guests with us for April Child Safety, for the April Child Safety presentation. Of course, I mentioned the resolution. We've seen it in the headlines, but of course, and the tragic cases, most recently Sandra Cantú, we all give our thoughts and prayers to her and her family during this tragic time. But those are not the normal cases, if there is such a thing as a normal case of child abuse, but those are not the typical cases of child abuse. Child abuse is much more subtle. It occurs, it is reported 3 million times in the United States, and most experts believe that the actual occurrence of child abuse is three times greater. A report of child abuse is made every 10 seconds. Four children die every day as a result of child abuse, and three out of four of these victims are under the age of four. Here in Los Angeles, every day, there are cases of child abuse reported. In my district, in the northeast San Fernando Valley, there were 228 cases of child abuse handled by the LAPD Foothill Division and 259 cases by the LAPD Mission Division, a total of almost 500. This year, two stations have had a total of 353 cases of child abuse already. So this is something that we absolutely should focus on, not just once, one month out of the year, but every day of the year. Child abuse cannot be prevented without education, and how to recognize it, and what to do if you suspect child abuse. What do you do?
You have to help the kids.
Wait, she has much more information. Come here.
You have to help the kids when they're hurt. Call 911.
Today, I'm joined by City Attorney Delgado, who spearheads our efforts with LAPD to expand our prevention of child abuse in the city. I'd like to ask him to step forward at this time.
Thank you, Councilmember Alarcon. I'm here to just say that this is an important month to recognize the crime of child abuse, but it's not just this month, it's every day. As the council member pointed out, this is a serious problem, not only here in Los Angeles, but across our nation, and we have to end the silence, and we have to end the cycle that cycles up in intensity and from generation to generation. While we prosecute this crime, if we've taken it to the courthouse steps, we're too late. And so we have to do all we can to prevent child abuse from occurring in the very first place. So I commend all of our partners here today. I commend the deputies in my office who have taken on this charge, and in particular, I commend Councilmember Alarcon for his fight to bring this to everybody's attention. Thank you.
I do want to mention that next Wednesday, the City Attorney's Office is hosting Kids' Day at City Hall, and largely as a result of this being the National Child Abuse Month. Our next speaker is Lieutenant Vincent Neglia with the LAPD to briefly talk about what they're doing to prevent child abuse.
Good morning. We thank the council for giving us the opportunity to help heighten awareness on this very sensitive issue, and if we could impart one message in particular, is that if you think you're looking at child abuse, you're probably right. Please call 911.
I'm having a negotiation with somebody who... I'm, I'm having a negotiation with somebody who spoke so eloquently at the press conference, but doesn't want to speak right now. But I'd like to ask her if she would please speak, Dr. Monica McCoy with the Los Angeles Community Child Abuse Council.
Thank you very much for declaring April as Child Abuse Prevention Month. We're joining the president, the governor, and so many cities throughout the country and recognizing how important it is to prevent child abuse. It costs billions and billions of dollars each year. And we know that our prevention efforts can reduce the deaths, the injuries, and all the pain that comes with child abuse. Thank you very much.
There are many organizations who take this very seriously every day, and I want to present certificates to each one. Dr. Monica McCoy? Representing ISAFE, Jeff Godless. This is presented to Terry Schroder from ISAFE Incorporated. And representing the office of the City Attorney, Rocky Delgado. And Monica Barajas, who also works for the City Attorney's Office and has provided us not only her, her work, but her daughter to make the announcement in Spanish and English. Thank you. And a sponsor of the program, Haritos Kids, represented by Alex Barajas. And yes, he is Alyssa's father.
Uncle.
Uncle, 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 I'm sorry, uncle. It's good to have connections, right, Alyssa? Okay, Katie Corretes on behalf of First Five LA and Myra Gomez. This certificate is presented to Myra Gomez, but, um, she couldn't be here today, so we want to present this to you. Thank you so much. First Five LA. And MP Urban Marketing, Michelle Pinedo. Alex is going to take hers as well. Gary, it's spelled wrong again. Gary Mangiofico. I think I got it right this time. Representing Los Angeles Universal Preschool and Laura Romero. Ida Safer from...
Also with Elliot.
Also with Los Angeles Universal Preschool. We do have one for our most important guest, Alyssa Barajas. She's sending the word out to kids to call 911, llame a nueve once. Thank you, and she will make an excellent teacher someday. Thank you, Alyssa. Dile otra vez. Say it one more time in English and Spanish.
Call 911. Llame a nueve once.
We also have a certificate for somebody who couldn't be here today, and that is Tony Shalub, who is Monk on TV. He obviously was the star of the PSA, and we're very pleased that he is taking on this cause to promote. And so thank you very much. With that, we are announcing that today is National Child Abuse Prevention Month. Please reduce. I just realized, this, this resolution says National Child Abuse Month. I don't think that's an error, so we're gonna have to change this. And I'm gonna ask you for your signatures once again. It's National Child Abuse Prevention Month. And please, if you suspect, if you feel, if you sense, if you have any inclination that there might be child abuse occurring for somebody that you know or somebody that you see, please call 911. Llame, llame a nueve once. Gracias. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Alarcon. Our next presentation, before that, Mr. Smith wants to do a quick introduction. Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate the opportunity. Today, I'm joined by some very special guests. First of all, our good friend from California State University in Northridge, Justin Xin Zhi Zhu, who is a director of the China Institute at Cal State Northridge. Joining us are a number of very special guests. We have 12 visitors from China who are professors at some of the 46 sister universities of Cal State University in Northridge. Each year, they bring visiting Chinese scholars who are here as part of the China Institute. But this year, we also have two very special guests I want to introduce to you. First of all, the honorable Zhang Kangping, the mayor of Pengpu, Zhaibai, China. Mr. Mayor, welcome. And also the honorable Juha Li, who's the vice president of Shanghai Municipal People's Court. Ms. Li. Also with the group today is a number, a president and chief surgeon of the Yangpu District Central Hospital in Shanghai, several high-level representatives of large companies and civic organizations, professors from the Shanghai Normal University and Jennings University. They are here as part of the exchange program of Cal State University China Institute that is meant to promote understanding of the people's culture of China and strengthen the friendship and ties with the United States of America and the people of China. Shanghai's, the China Institute at Cal State Northridge has been a leading institute in, in studies and programs for 25 years. And in that time, has hosted hundreds of Chinese scholars and arranged dozens of exchanges with the people of China and the United States. They are here today to learn about municipal government, particularly transportation and urban planning. And I think we might learn a lesson from them actually, because Mr. Rosendahl, myself, Mr. Parks, and I know Mr. Zhang have all been to Shanghai, China, and ridden on the incredible Maglev train, which goes out of their airport into Pudong portion of Shanghai, which they built in about two and a half years. Goes about 12 miles, and it runs about 235 miles an hour to get people out of their airport. And they built it in just over two years. So we might actually learn a lot from them rather than learning much from us. While they're here, they're here for a half a year, participating in leadership training, carrying out research projects, and lecturing at graduate classes in such subjects as Chinese music, economic development, and public administration and urban planning. Ladies and gentlemen, our very special guest from China and the Cal State University China Institute. Welcome. Would the mayor like to say a word?
And I'm going to ask the principal, Dr. Kevin Baker, to speak in just a minute. But just to review or do the roll call, I'm here with Ray Cortinas, superintendent, Bertha Franco, office assistant, and Niketa Cabrera, first grade teacher, Carmen Esterman, fifth grade teacher, Catherine Proctor, UTLA board member and chapter chair, third grade teacher, James Talton, our plant manager, Denise Pratt, assistant principal, Celia Ripke, director of local district five, Dr. Kevin Baker, principal of all we surveyed. And these folks are all from Nevin Avenue Elementary School faculty and the community to celebrate their accomplishments in improving student performance and achievement. Nevin has served South Los Angeles since 1919 and over the years has demonstrated outstanding effort in narrowing the achievement and opportunity gap for all of its students. And today, Nevin continues to cultivate its students in a manner that will prepare them for the next level in their education. Nevin Elementary is a school community that is passionate about educating the whole child and ensuring their learning community is maintained and strives. The reason I've invited Nevin Avenue community here today was to acknowledge one of their most recent accomplishments. Nevin Avenue Elementary School, or Nevin Elementary School, was the recipient of the 2009 California Service Learning Award for Raised Academic Achievement Through Great Efforts in Character and Community Building. Along with 10 other schools, Nevin was selected because they have incredible service learning programs that help students integrate what they learn in the class and apply it in ways that benefit the community. I'm also proud to announce that of the 11 schools selected for this prestigious award, Nevin was the only school selected from the Los Angeles Unified School District, and I think we should give them a big hand for that. Now, in order to qualify for the award, schools not only had to meet their academic performance index growth targets for the past two years, but they also had to use service learning as a school-wide instructional method. Service learning is an instructional strategy where students learn academic content standards by participating in organized service that addresses community needs and fosters civic responsibility. So joining me today, as I said, are members of the Nevin Avenue community and Dr. Baker, the principal, who will introduce, if I've missed anybody, those who've joined him today for this recognition. And I just want to say in closing, I'm proud of all the hard work, the commitment and the dedication shown by everyone who has either directly or indirectly contributed to the success of Nevin Avenue Elementary School. And they have truly made great strides in both academics and community spirit. And I have to say, it's also a beautiful, well-kept school, too. And I always enjoy going there and, you know, watching the assemblies, having meetings, talking to the kids, and just a tremendous community. So I want to say congratulations and introduce to you the principal, Dr. Kevin Baker.
Thank you, Councilman Carr. It's a pleasure and honor to be here in the chambers today with each of you. It was Plato that says, "You cannot see the future any further than you can see the past." So I want to take a moment just to look to the past. I look around the room and I see some former parents I worked with, Mr. Labange and Ms. Huntun, parents that I remember, your children in kindergarten, first and fifth grade. Ms. Han, I remember your nephew at South Shore's Magnet. And so I see friends in the room and parents whose children have grown up. In the room, the leadership behind me is unquestionable. Superintendent Cortinas, I share with you my first day at Nevin. The parents and children and staff at Nevin seem to have been a forgotten group of people. Their community had deteriorated and their scores were lost. No child left behind. It indicated the federal government wanted to control their school. Their continued deterioration said the state wanted to control their school. I brought with me Ms. Pratt with her leadership. We found a group of parents, a group of teachers, same group that had lost control of the school took control of the school. They raised their achievement. They partnered with the parents and the community. And today, it's a community where everyone feels safe. The children are treated with respect and the children feel responsible for their community. And they have become great leaders. Tonight, they're celebrating their final performance of Romeo and Juliet, a performance we never thought would ever happen. So we're very proud of the school. And it's the leaders that stand behind me who have done the work. I bow and acknowledge them with great gratitude.
Please, Mr. President. Yeah? Any of you wish to speak, please bring greetings. This is the line, right way? Oh, so upside down. Okay, this is their flag. Isn't it nice? Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Our next presentation will be from the council member from the fourth district, Mr. Tom Labange.
Before I make this next presentation, Mr. President, as we gather here, and I've got to ask you to stand, I want the great students of Cherramoya Avenue Elementary School to stand up and be recognized by the Los Angeles City Council. Cherramoya is a fine school that you and I share, Mr. Garcetti, and right underneath the Hollywood sign, "Good luck, students." One day, you may be standing here right now making this presentation. You ready for it? How about you, buddy? You, too? All right, good job. Give Cherramoya a big hand. Thank all your teachers. Well, here today, right next to me, is a wonderful woman who had a concept way out there way before the time, and the time is now. Julia Russell is here right now, and on Russell Avenue, no less. She created a home that Mr. Garcetti drives by with great appreciation as he studies the greeting of Los Angeles, what all of us have over the past several years. We're here to salute the 20th anniversary of Echo Home Network in Los Angeles. Give them a big hand. And if I might say, Julia, it was established, as we know, in 1989 in the Las Feliz district of Los Angeles to enhance individual quality of life as well as a thought-out demonstration of education, of building a constituency of the sustainable urban living, which was so far before the time, because that's what we're talking about, Cherramoya, to make sure we have sustainable urban living. And we want to make sure that we recognize this today for your 20th anniversary so we can continue the message. Over 70,000 people have toured the Echo Home and the network environmental demonstration projects on the site to see solar technology, zero escape, which the Department of Water Power would like at this time in age, organic gardening, orchid composting, recycling and other bio-friendly resources, conserving systems and products so they can adopt in their own homes and businesses. Whereas Homes for the Future Tours and Echo Building forms of the Echo Home Network have led the way in showcasing the greenhouse homes in Southern California regions. And Echo Home Network was the principal conveyor of the first Los Angeles Ecological Cities Conference, bringing together professionals from all over the world in the areas of development, building design, planning and finance to forge a vision of economically and ec- economically and...
Ecologic.
Ecological. That's good, there. I've got to go back to Mr. Hay's class at Marshall High on that one. Enhancement for a sound Los Angeles. Now, this is real simple. Therefore, be it resolved by adoption of this resolution to the Los Angeles City Council, joined by the great mayor of Los Angeles, Mr. Antonio Villarosa, as well as our city controller and our city attorney and all the members of the city council, hereby commend and congratulate Echo Home Network for their 20 years of raising the environmental consciousness and creating a sense of personal empowerment and inspirational, sustainable lifestyle for policy changes in the city of Los Angeles. None other hap- doesn't happen unless there's one person who calls the play, and the one person right here is Julia Russell. Give her a hand and congratulations, Julia.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Labange and council members all for this great honor, which we gratefully accept on behalf of the Echo Home Network and all its members. I'm also very grateful to have this opportunity to acknowledge and thank Echo Home Network founding board president, Bob Walter, whose multifaceted abilities shaped and nurtured its emergence and development for two decades, and long, longtime board member, my mentor and co-conspirator in all things socially evolutionary and strategic, Lois Arken, founder of Cooperative Resources and Services Project and LA Echo Village. Thank you. Our more precious-than-gold treasurer, Jan Hoig.
Jan.
Our current president, Larry Burns.
Larry, good job.
Principal of Environmental Home Improvement, our beloved secretary, Lee Aglisitron, and irreplaceable board members, Joe Feinblatt, formerly of the L.A. Department of Water and Power.
Hi, Joe.
And Desa Kay, whose unstinting support since 1990 and unreasonable extraordinary competence has supported and made possible the continuation of Echo Home Network programs. Thank you. Many of the wonderful, talented, dedicated people who helped to carry the Echo Home Network forward all this time are here today, and I thank you all for being here.
All right, Julia.
But many are not, and I do wish I could call out the names of all who have been critical to its very survival at times and to its growth and improvement at others, but the list would be too long. So I just hope that all know that this honor is yours and yours.
And the future is theirs.
Yes, right. And you have my undying gratitude for your enduring support and inspiration. As I was riding my bike to the metro this morning, I was remembering the day in 1966 when I first arrived in Los Angeles. It was my 30th birthday, and I thought the plane had crashed and I'd waked up in heaven. The lush foliage, the palm trees, the flowers, the balmy weather enchanted me, and I am enchanted still. And Echo Home Network grew out of the love that I and all who have, who recognize the privilege it is to live in this felicitous place and a dawning awareness of the negative environmental impact of our modern urban lifestyle and business as usual, degrading our quality of life and disrupting the actual climate patterns of our beautiful living planet, Earth. So the Echo Home Network has been dedicated for over 20 years to enhancing individual quality of life and planetary well-being through demonstration, education, and building a constituency for sustainable urban living. Now, we have our programs that we have worked to fulfill our mission through, listed, outlined on this page, which I hope that all council members do have in hand.
We'll distribute it if they don't, so their deputies can have it as well as themselves.
Thank you very much. And it has, I just want to say, it has been a joy and a privilege and sometimes a little frustrating to have played a role in raising consciousness and awareness of the need for full participation of all sectors, from individual households to educational institutions to municipal, state, and federal agencies to international corporations in our metamorphosis into a sustainable civilization. Our future does look green as we rethink, redesign, and rebuild the way we inhabit the Earth. Echo Home Network looks forward to continuing to work with Councilwoman Labange and his office and the city of Los Angeles and Southern California region to fulfill its destiny as the solar capital of the world.
And we'll do that, and we're going to do it to make it good, because you came here in 1966. We're going to try to make it just as wonderful for everybody in 2016 as well. I thank you.
We have to try to keep...
I'm done.
We have about six minutes per presentation, so we have to try, and we're about three minutes over, so we've got to wrap things up.
Yesterday, yesterday...
Thank you.
The Arcadia Echo Home, designed and built by L.A. Community Development Agency's senior planning, Dr. David Hong. David, come up here.
Hello.
Okay, did I say that correctly?
Edward.
Okay, Edward.
Wong.
Wong. Received a Build It Green, Greens Rated Home Design for the first Southern California existing home. Edward, thank you very much. We're honored to agree, by Janice Han's beautiful outfit there, green, green, green. Here we go.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Labange. Thank you all so much. Congratulations. Our next presentation is from a council member from the 10th district, Herb Wesson.
Thank you, Mr. President and members. It's a great honor for me today to interview, not interview, but to honor an individual who's been a friend to my office, a friend to the city of Los Angeles, and that's the great Mike Hellier that's at my right. He owns an outfit that's called Games and Creations. A hundred years ago, when he was a kid, his grandfather had a catering business. So he understood, he worked with his grandfather so he could understand how to make a business successful. He also attended the great Crescent Heights Elementary School that's in the district that I'm proud to represent. As he got older, he decided to create his own company, and that's where we get the Games and Creations. He has not only can put on some of the best events and has some of the biggest clients in the city of Los Angeles. The thing that makes Mike so special is that he recognizes in order to be a successful business, you have to be a successful partner. So he's donated to youth sports teams. Whenever I do anything in the district to help the children, we have a big Winter Wonderland every year, and he's there himself, hands-on, making sure that everything goes perfectly. Also, he's blessed to have the daughter of a staff member that works for me, Janice. Where's Janice at? Come up here. I want your mama to see you on TV. Janice Lacy, who's the daughter of Sylvia Lacy, and I think she's Mike's right hand, and I'm sure he would tell you that when I afford him the opportunity to speak. Now, lastly, I want to say, he's got two daughters somewhere behind me, Alyssa and Brittany, and they are sitting at his knee, watching him run the business. So when their time comes, Mike, I think they might do a better job than you. But anyway, to the L.A. City Council, I would like for you to give a round of applause to a very good human being, Mike Hellier.
Thank you very much, Herb. It's a pleasure to stand in front of all of you today with a great team behind me. Without this great team behind me, I couldn't do what I do today. So thank you very much to the council member, to Ms. Lacy, for giving me the opportunity to do Taste of Soul and a lot of great events in L.A. It's the district that I grew up in, and I'm very proud to represent it. Thank you very much.
All right. Hey, wait, I've got one more. We'll give you, this photo op time.
Thank you very much. And as we're doing that, with Madam Clerk, if you please call the roll.
Alec Concardenist Grohan, Weezer Labange, Parks Perry, Ray Zosel Smith, Vice Wesson, Sign Garcetti, 12 members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
All right, first order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Ms. Han moves. Ms. Groo, seconds. Without objection, those will be approved. Next order of business.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Weezer moves. Mr. Zine, seconds. Without objection, those will be approved as well. If we can now recognize Ms. Han from the 15th council district for the next presentation. This will be our last presentation, and we'll want to hear the...
Unlike other classics, West Side Story grows younger.
I know, really, let's watch the whole thing. Colleagues, it is my great pleasure today to have with us one of the stars of that incredible classic, West Side Story, with us today. Russ Tamblin is here in the city council chambers. We actually were scheduled to have both George Chakris, who was Bernardo, as well as Russ being here. We just got a call from George Chakris. He was on his way here and apparently just got violently ill and needed to turn around and go back. So we are pleased to have Russ here today. Russ was actually 27 when he portrayed the teenage troublemaker, Riff, in West Side Story. He was born here in Los Angeles, and he was groomed early for stardom. He was discovered at age 10 by actor Lloyd Bridges for the play Stone Jungle, and he was soon performing on radio and in L.A.-based musical reviews. Having taken up dancing and acrobatics from the age of six, Russ marked his abilities with his very first TV appearance on The Ed Sullivan Show. After being featured in the popular, family-oriented comedy, Father of the Bride, Tamblin soon took off in musical films. He later went on to earn an Oscar nomination for his exceptional performance in the ensemble feature Peyton Place. And in 1990, he landed the role of the overtly weird psychiatrist, Dr. Lawrence Jacoby, in the popular TV cult series, Twin Peaks. Lately, he's been taking on choreographic duties and he's been managing his daughter's career, actress Amber Tamblin. Why we have Russ here today and why we were going to have George here was that both of them are going to be honored and featured next weekend for our annual Los Angeles Harbor International Film Festival, which we hold down in San Pedro at the Warner Grand Theater, and we show movies that are of interest to a wide variety of people, and there's usually an emphasis on something that connects people with the port of Los Angeles. And Stephanie Marticich, who's the founder and the executive director of the film festival, has decided to showcase West Side Story next Saturday and by bringing in kids from all over the city, and the theme will be Watch the Movie, Stop the Violence. And we want to use West Side Story as a lesson on how we might find other ways to resolve our conflicts besides throwing knives. So it's a great thrill to have Russ here, and it's a great honor that you've decided to lend yourself to our film festival in San Pedro. We know that there's a whole another generation of young people who will be able to see the movie next Saturday. And I know we have one council member, Herb Wesson, the former speaker of the State Assembly, who apparently knows every word to every song in this movie, has seen it hundreds of times, and can actually sing and dance his way.
Yeah, we're going to have him sing a song right now, if that's okay. Mr. Wesson, would you like to?
Well, I'm not going to sing, but I do want to say a few words before Riff speaks. Godfather I and Godfather II are two of my favorite movies. Right up there with them is West Side Story. I have seen West Side Story at least 70 some odd times. It was just on a few weeks ago, and I watched it as well. Janice is right. I know every song from Officer Crumpkin to When You're a Jet, You're a Jet All the Way, From Your First Cigarette to Your Last Dying Day. I know every song. There's a Place for Us. It was one of the most enjoyable movies that I ever saw in my life. But there was one negative thing that happened. All of my guys, we went out and we bought wristbands and switchblades on a Sunday. By Wednesday, the principal had all of our wristbands and all of our, all of our switchblades. It was just to see you act and dance and do the flips. And even though I truly loved your character, and when this is over, it would be my great honor if you would allow me to take a photograph with you. Sadly, I must admit to you that I was a shark. My grandmother felt that somewhere down the bloodline, there might be some Puerto Rican, so I had to side with my people. But it's an honor for you to come here and to let you know that the movie is every bit as relevant today as it was when I was a kid, and it's an honor. I'm just excited, Jan. I don't know when I've been so personally so excited when you brought someone in. I'm a true fan, and just for the heck of it, give us a backflip.
Thank you, Mr. Wesson.
I can't do that. Oh, my God, I can't do that.
And Mr. Wesson, I knew I always liked you for some reason. I played Bernardo, so I could sub today, but in high school, and I was a shark, always a shark. I'm sorry, Riff, but, you know, when you're a shark, you're a shark for life. But with that, I know Mr. Labange wants to say some good things as well.
For what you're doing at the Warner Grand. Stephanie, thank you. It takes someone from the community with passion, and to have someone who participated, there's nothing like the joy of a film. And as Mr. Wesson said, it is relevant today in any which way, and that all people see that. It's just phenomenal. So I just want to thank you. And I know you mentioned your films. I just had to mention Chinatown, Cool Hand Luke, Midnight Cowboy went right along with me, as well as West Side Story. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, we wanted to give you the certificate of recognition in conjunction with the sixth annual L.A. Harbor International Film Festival, Hollywood nostalgia tribute honoring West Side Story, the winner of 10 Academy Awards, including Best Picture of 1962, and for participating in the inaugural program, See the Movie, Stop the Violence, recognizing your stellar career and talent for your role as Riff and helping build the cinematic bridge between the people of the region and the people of the world. It is our pleasure to have you here today, and we'd like for you to say a few words.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you, Janice. This is a beautiful, and it has very special meaning for me because I was born in Los Angeles about seventy-five years ago and a little did I realize that I would one day be getting a certificate from the Los Angeles City Council. I really, I will find a very special place for this. And I, I'm also very happy to be a part of the international, the L.A. Harbor International Film Festival and for the, for what they're doing, which is See the Movie and Stop the Violence. You know, when we made West Side Story, we made it where Lincoln Center is now, but before Lincoln Center, there was just a bunch of old, it was a very old section of New York and they, they had a lot of trouble. There was a film company that filmed right before us and they had a lot of trouble with the gangs there and so we got smart. When we went there, we hired one of the gangs to work for us to be security guards and we had no trouble at all when we were filming. And, and it put, put the kids to work, which is, and they were just great. Boy, they were really, I mean, they were right there and so, you know, I just really appreciate what the City of, of Los Angeles is doing. I've been, it's been a project of mine for years and my wife Bonnie too, who works for the Ojai Foundation and does counseling up there with kids, kids at risk and so we're really honored to be a part of something like this and anything that helps, helps stopping a gang activity. And I'm so sorry that George Shakirish couldn't have been here today because since the movie, when we were on the movie, we weren't allowed to be friends. And by the way, when, when I went back for the, I guess the, I don't even know what anniversary, it was a fortieth, it was right after nine eleven and we went to New York and Jerome Robbins, who said that we couldn't speak to each other, George and I become like really best friends, really good friends. And they, they left these, and all the guests that went there, Robert Wise and George and Richard Beamer, in New York at the hotel, everybody, they left in our hotel rooms two T-shirts, a Shark T-shirt and a Jet T-shirt. And I guess they didn't know whose room it was or you know who, so that was one of the gifts that we got. So I put on the Shark T-shirt instead of the Jet T-shirt. And I told them, we had a big dinner afterwards and I went and I took my T-shirt and I said, Jerry Robbins is dead and I'm joining the Sharks.
That's funny.
So, so I think that's the thing is, I'm so pleased today and I thank you all so much. I really appreciate it. Thank you, Janice.
Thank you so much. Stephanie Martic, time to give your thirty seconds to just give us a brief overview of the film festival. Hello, everyone. Councilman Hahn sent everyone a letter with this lovely yellow flyer, our poster on the left with key art by Peter Reed Miller, friend, old friend of Councilman Labange. And we encourage you to please send students and young people, all people, because everybody needs to raise their awareness and their consciousness. It's free. We are the Statue of Liberty of Film Festivals. Give us, you're tired, you're poor, you're hungry. We will feed them. Next year, maybe we'll clothe them. And especially in this economy, everything's on our website. We really want you to be there. Mr. Weston, please come as our guest all day and to the gala and dress in your Shark Chic and get those snacks.
He's got that every day, don't worry.
During the day, we have popcorn and soda, but at the end of the day, we get some rum in our Coke, thanks to our good sponsors. So please come and see us in San Pedro, not just for the film festival, but all year round. We have wonderful things going on at the Warner Grand Theater every day of the week practically. And thank you and thanks to Russ again. And George is so sad. He was driving here, he had to turn around and leave, he got a bug and go back to his home. So he really sends his regrets and he'll be there next week though, so come and see him.
Thank you very much. With that, Madam Clerk, if we can please run through the agenda, please.
First item on the agenda is an item for which public hearing has been held and the E.E. report has been submitted and distributed to the council members.
Okay, we have item one, the report has been submitted and we have cards on that as well, so we'll call that special. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration and that's two through seven.
All right, there's no objection to consideration, those are before us.
And item number two is a commissioner, do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Yes, please. Let's hold commissioner on the desk, item number two.
And I believe there are cards on three, four, and seven.
Okay, we'll call those special for cards from the public. That leaves us with five and six. Any members wishing to call five and six special? Five for Mr. Alakon. So let's open the roll on number six then, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That is approved. Please call the roll for the special meeting.
Alakon Cardenis, Gruhl Hahn, Rizel Labange, Parks Perry, Reyes, Nelson Smith, Wes Weston, Zine Garcetti, twelve members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
All right, first item, please.
First item is item number eight and that's an item for which public hearing has been held and I believe, or I understand there is a substitute motion in the works on that item.
We'll hold that for the substitute. Next items, please.
Next items are items nine and ten and those are items for which public hearings have not been held, ten votes are required for consideration.
All right, we have cards on both those. We'll call those special for cards from the public if there's no objection to considering those. Okay.
Do you wish to take those up now while council's in the special meeting or do you wish to go back to the?
Yes, I think Ms. Gruhl wanted number ten out of order. Okay, we'll take ten and then we'll come back to the regular meeting for special comment. Dr. Clyde Williams, if you'd like to come forward for item number ten, please.
My name is Dr. Clyde Williams, 4115 Barrett Road, El Sereno. Speed kills. It kills many in Los Angeles. In El Sereno, we have the Huntington Expressway, fifty miles an hour because people can do it. Are we going to get a fifty mile speed limit? I would hope not. However, there are a lot of pedestrian friendly measures that could be taken now, especially if you could get state funding for traffic calming, speed reduction, reduce Huntington Drive to two lanes each way rather than the six lane expressway that we have now. So although I support the general concept, I think there are measures that can be done at the present time to reduce the speed and the killing of people on our highways. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Next speaker is Arnold Sacks on the same issue. Number ten.
Thank you very much. Interrelated movement. I'm wondering if you would pursue your position on legislation on the police legislation that allowed the detectives not to authorize rape kit investigation. Thank you. That caused the backlog before the policy was changed.
Sorry, sir, we're discussing speed limits today. Thank you.
I'm just asking about a position on legislation, if there was legislation involved in that.
That's not before us today right now, but thank you. That would be more appropriate for our general public comment. And that will close our public comment for item number ten on the speed limit. Ms. Gruhl is our first speaker and after Ms. Gruhl will be Mr. Zine. I think she stepped out for one second, so Mr. Zine, do you want to?
She's coming around.
Is she coming up? Okay, Ms. Gruhl.
Sorry, I was trying to find Greg Smith as well. Colleagues, this piece of legislation is important and critical to what we're talking about. In Mr. Zine's district and in Mr. Smith's district, we recently have had a number of speed zones that have been required by law to increase. Every seven years, the Department of Transportation and LAPD must go out and survey streets to see how many, how fast the traffic is going. And by state law, eighty-five percent of the people are going faster than what we think is appropriate. We are required to increase that speed limit to be able to enforce the law by radar guns. And what we have seen is LAPD has indicated they will not be able to enforce the law unless they're able to use those radar guns. It is unsafe and not within, really, they think that the ability of the Los Angeles Police Department to enforce it. My problem has always been, Mr. Smith has fought this, Mr. Zine has, is to be able to have local control. The impetus for this state legislation many years ago was to limit us, the state, from having speed zones. We are suddenly at sixty-five miles an hour and now it's fifteen and some small cities in the middle of the state would get all of their revenue from utilizing that change in speed limits. And so we want to look at, and we've been talking about this, I introduced a motion that would, that asked for state legislation to be developed. And in fact, there are two legislators in the state that have done that, both in Senate Bill, Maldonado, as well as Assembly Member Paul Kokorian, who I spoke to this last week, and introduced AB 766, it's going to be heard in the Assembly Transportation Committee on Monday, and ask that we do that and Mr. Labonge, who's also been an active part on this issue, to be able to use enforcement and to be able to have local control. It's a common theme and message that we have that is local control to deal with these issues. Because I know that if we said everyone was driving down Ventura Boulevard at sixty-five miles an hour, eighty-five percent of the people, it is unsafe for it to be sixty-five miles per hour. But currently, the law could allow that to happen. And so, we think it's critically important that we change the law, that we have local control in determining that within limits, and to be able to support that. So, there's been a lot of articles in the paper because of speed limits are having to go up to forty, forty-five miles per hour in some of the areas. So, I would ask colleagues, and thank you, Mr. Garcetti, for letting us do this quickly in the beginning and to have this special today, so the Assembly member and everyone will know on Monday that the City of Los Angeles strongly stands by allowing us to control our own destiny and be able to provide safe enforcement here in Los Angeles.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti.
Mr. Zine.
Mr. Labonge is lobbying me to support this motion, and he doesn't have to lobby me because I support this motion.
Good, okay, good. Call for the question.
Not ready, I still have to have some comments on Mr. Labonge. The land of laws, we are a land of laws, and with my forty-one years with the LAPD and as a motor supervisor, traffic safety, et cetera, it used to work. It no longer works. And there's two motions, Councilmember Gruel's and my motion, and basically they piggyback each other in this particular endeavor. It doesn't give discretion to jurisdictions, whether it be Los Angeles or other jurisdictions, to take in different variables. And what it's designed to do is avoid speed traps. Where you'd have cars traveling at what would be a reasonable speed of forty miles an hour, and they post a twenty-five mile an hour limit, and it's called a speed trap. So, the law was designed to avoid speed traps. Sadly, we've had neighborhood council representatives come before Transportation Committee and testify against this. Now, speaking with the officers of the LAPD, in particular, motor officers, when I was a motor officer, we'd clock speed, we estimate speed, we didn't have radar, we didn't have that technology. Unless you've got radar technology, officers don't chase cars like they used to. And it's very hazardous to chase cars and a motorcycle, but that was the tradition of the past. Now, what happens if we don't have the officers out there with radar, they're not working the speed areas, people keep complaining, speeds get higher and higher and higher, and as you stated, sixty-five miles an hour, if we don't control it, it will be that someday. Because whatever the prevailing condition that people think is safe, that's the criteria that DOT uses when they do these surveys, and by law, they must have these surveys completed every, I think it's every seven years, they have to update the survey. So, what troubles me is neighborhood councils have come down and testified against the police department, testified against DOT, and what's happened is some of the areas where we need to have speed enforcement haven't been enforced. The officers have been very candid, unless we have radar, we're not going to be in force those areas because of the hazardous conditions to the officers. So, this is critical that we have this changed. And hopefully, the state legislature will see that it needs to be done and other factors taken into consideration to give us some discretion. And if we don't, it'll just get worse. What is currently a forty, next year will be a forty-five, and then next year will be a fifty, and then a fifty-five. And there's no ceiling to what's going to happen if we don't control it. And the neighborhood councils look at this, is we're trying to increase speed limits. We're not trying to increase speed limits, what we're trying to do is control the speed and have people comply. Clearly, there are established limits, twenty-five in the business of residential unless otherwise posted. What we have is the limits that are posted with radar meet a different criteria. So, it's critical that we have this passed, it's critical that the state legislature changes the laws, and it's also important we don't establish speed traps. We don't want people driving down the street and getting citations just because it is feasible to write a citation to generate revenue, but not enhance safety. It's all about safety, not about revenue. What we need to do is come up with something reasonable, and that's what these two measures do, is bring in the safety mechanism to give DOT some discretion. Long overdue, so I thank Councilmember Gruel and her committee, and hopefully, the neighborhood councils understand, we're trying to make it safer and not increase hazards by establishing these programs. So, we request an "aye" vote, and hopefully, the state legislature will have it done, the governor will sign it, and we'll come back to reasonable safety speed within not only Los Angeles, but California. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Alacon is our next speaker, and then Ms. Gruel.
I'll be brief. This is something that we need to support, but I have to tell you, I would like to see the DOT be a little more creative in finding ways to deter people driving fast. One thought is the speed dots. Why don't we use, many jurisdictions use speed dots just to cause a sort of, a what?
Rumble strips.
Rumble strips? Rumble strips, okay. To, so that as cars are driving, they automatically will slow down because they feel the shock of the bump. It's not a speed hump, but it does create a vibration that would cause anybody to slow down as a first reaction. I just don't think we're being creative enough on the streets, particularly in the San Fernando Valley where the streets are so wide and the signals are so few and far between. And it's a lot less expensive than signalization, which costs upwards of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars per traffic signal. Even a pedestrian signal, which doesn't necessarily stop cars, costs you seventy-five thousand dollars. So, we can't afford that, but it seems to me these rumble strips, if you will, could have an effect of reducing the flow of traffic. Let's not forget that the original reason for this law is good. We do not want local jurisdictions ripping people off by creating speed hazards or speed traps. And so, I think that's good. I believe the Kokorian measure will help us to have more flexibility, but I would hate to see not just us, but other jurisdictions in the state abuse that flexibility, otherwise we'll be back in the same situation we were before and have the drivers' uprising. So, I think there are ways that we can create by, with architectural design and with the one example, rumble strips, if you will, a way to slow down cars so that we can get the natural speeds to be where they should be, as opposed to hampering us as they are today. So, I do support this completely.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, and I'm sorry if I repeat anything that's been said already because I was in the back in another meeting, but I fully support this. I just want to caution the council that this has been tried before. I have personally been to Sacramento on three occasions over the last ten years trying to get this law changed because it's a ridiculous law, and it makes no sense. And from a statistic point of view, you're guaranteeing that the speed is going to go up every time you do this, because you set a higher base every time. People go above the base, and eventually, you get to the point where they just can't go any faster, which is probably ninety miles an hour. So, that's what the stupid law does. But I'm not, I don't want us to get high hopes on this because we've tried to change this law numerous times and been unsuccessful. I hope this new legislature will do it, I hope the Assembly Member Kokorian Maldonado will accomplish this, but I don't want people's hopes to get raised, particularly in those neighborhood councils that have been discussing this over the last year, as they become aware of the fact that we raise the speeds automatically every few years so that we can do traffic enforcement. And as Mr. Zine knows very well, if we take away that useful tool of radar, we're not going to get much enforcement, because those cops just don't have the time and the ability to do the traditional way we used to do it, and then of tracking a car, going to court and trying to argue the point, rather than going in with a speed, a radar clocking that you win a hundred percent of the time on. And so, it's going to change the way we police, it's going to change the way our officers do that job, and that's what happens when we don't follow the state law. So, our choices are two. One, we follow the state law, raise the stupid rates every single time, or we say no, and the speed limits are going to be not enforced by radar. And that's the unfortunate part of this law, it's a stupid law, we need to get it changed, and I commend both of the Assembly members for doing it. And I will go to Sacramento, and I will meet Ms. Gruel, although she'll probably be across the street in a different job, will go with me, and others. We need to go en masse, like we did a few years ago, and not be one of us up there promoting this, but all of us have to do that, because this is an important change for Los Angeles, and we've got to get it done. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gruel.
Just in closing, and one of the comments I want to make, because we talked about this in DOT, in the Transportation Committee, was the fact that we've had to today on a couple items that have come before the City Council to raise the speed limits because we're in this catch-22 until we change state law. But we talked to the Department of Transportation and included in our report that said if we are successful in doing the state law, that we would go back to those areas which we've had to raise and do another survey. We may have to find some money, we may have to figure out how to do that, but we are going to, that will be the top priority, is to go back to those areas that we've had to enforce the law. And it's, I'm hoping, Mr. Smith, that things have changed and we will be successful and do this. I can't imagine who is going to fight us, but it is an issue that has hit the San Fernando Valley much more, I think, quickly because they're redoing the surveys there. It will impact all of us, though, in the City of Los Angeles. So, I want to thank our state legislators for pushing that forward, and talked to Paul Kokorian personally last week about this, and anything that we can do to help to make this a better way in which we can control speeds in the City of Los Angeles. So, thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti, and with that, hopefully, ask for an "aye" vote.
Thank you, Mr. Zine, for a second time.
Just one final thought. Neighborhood councils coming to the Transportation Commission complaining about it. If neighborhood councils would contact their state legislators and encourage them to support this so we can change that law, much better time invested in helping us make this change instead of criticizing, we're trying to follow the law.
Shout out to everyone, that all of our neighborhood councils to support this, and again, particularly Mr. Zine and Mr. Smith's district have been the first that have been impacted by that. But yes, they should point their frustration at the state legislature to help us get this passed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. With that, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. If we can go back to the regular meeting, before we take up public comment, which will be the next item after this, we're going to take up item number one. If there's no objection, let's go ahead. We have, I think, more public speaker cards on one than our general public comment cards, so that will allow us to move forward with that. I'd like to recognize the Chair of our Energy and Environment Committee, Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. We did have a committee meeting, a special meeting the other day, and we, I guess I'd like to invite members of DWP to come up to the table now. We made a couple of amendments which were included in the committee report, one of which asks that City Council in the future be given a minimum of thirty days to review water shortage rate proposals, and the second requires the Department, upon implementation of shortage year rates, to provide the mayor and council with quarterly reports on drought conditions, the status of shortage year rates, and the need to continue or terminate them given the status of water supply. I also wanted to note for the record that we have a letter on record, and he is present today, from Timothy Brick, Chairman of the Metropolitan Water District, supporting the proposal here today. And in the committee meeting, we discussed a number of things with respect to the water shortage rate proposal, which included also some of the concerns Councilmembers expressed at the previous Council member, Council meeting. We discussed the impact of water shortage rates on renters, the outreach plan to inform renters, property managers, the steps the Department is undertaking to encourage further drought tolerant landscapes, the impact water shortage rates may have on low income and lifeline customers, and how they intend to inform them on how to cut their water use, and how they will update their records to ensure that they are receiving their full water allocation, impacts on businesses, and the need to conduct outreach. And those are just some of the general concepts that came up. I would appreciate it if Mr. Nahai could just give us a synopsis and a quick overview of where we are to date with the amendments and how the rollout intends to go.
And Ms. Perry, just before you start, Mr. Nahai.
Hold my time.
Let me know when you want to move forward on the comment cards as well.
Great.
Okay.
Good morning. Chair Perry, thank you for your comments. Council President Garcetti, good morning to you. Councilmembers, my name is David Nahai. I'm privileged to serve as the CEO and General Manager of the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power. And I have here at the table with me, to my right, to my immediate right, Jim McDaniel, who heads the water system, to his right, Greg Black, who's the head of our Budget and Rates Department, to my immediate left is Jeff Palto, our Chief Financial Officer, and to his immediate left is Joe Briovich of the Los Angeles City Attorney's Office. This, the concept of the shortage year rates was first adopted by the Board pursuant to an ordinance passed in October of '07, but it was adopted by the Board of Commissioners on March 17th of '09. The City Council heard it on the 7th of April, remanded it to the Board of Commissioners. It was then heard again by the Board of Commissioners on the 14th, was reviewed by the Energy and Environment Committee on the 15th, and is before you here today on the 17th. On the 14th of April, the Metropolitan Water District adopted its a ten percent cutback to all member agencies, and Jeff Kiteminger, the General Manager of the Metropolitan Water District, is here with us today. At the meeting of the Board of Commissioners on the 14th, the concerns that had been expressed by Councilmembers at the last Council meeting were addressed, they were entered into the record, and an additional discussion was had at the E and D Committee meeting as well. In terms of, and I'm more than happy to run through those concerns and talk about how they're being addressed, should the Councilmembers wish me to do that, or I can respond to questions regarding that issue. But with respect to the question of outreach, Councilmember Perry, there was a workshop that was held with the neighborhood councils on March 14th. There'll be an additional workshop, which is scheduled for the 18th. A rate notification letter will be sent directly to each customer. A standard on bill insert will be mailed with each bill beginning in May. There'll be a particular letter sent to low income and lifeline customers. Information will be posted online commencing May 1st, which will explain the shortage year rates, provide information regarding individual tiers, and answer frequently asked questions. Customer service representatives currently have the ability to determine a customer's water allocation and talk to them about what the Tier One allocation is. That number is 1-800-DIAL-DWPP. Again, 1-800-DIAL-DWPP. The website is ladwp.com, and I'll repeat that, ladwp.com. Print materials are going to be circulated, again, with additional explanations, and there will be presentations made to neighborhood councils commencing, as I said, April 18th and going on until June. We're going to have print advertising, radio advertising, television advertising, we will maximize earned media in order to provide a very full explanation of the shortage year rates to all of our customers. And Joe Romano of our Public Affairs Department is also here to provide an additional explanation. So, with that, please let me know if you'd like us to make a presentation or whether we should take your questions.
Thank you. Did you want to go the next speaker on the queue?
I think, do we go?
Okay.
You hold my time.
Okay. All right. Ms. Gruel is our next speaker, and then we can go to public comments after that.
Okay. Thank you. I just had a couple of questions, and we asked some of them, and issues that have, I've raised before but want to raise in the larger public setting. One is, I've had a lot, and I know Mr. Alacon as well, issues related to larger areas that have horsekeeping and a different, you know, how we will deal with some of those issues. I know the one message I want to send again is if you have been conserving, you will not be, you know, impacted if you've had that fifteen percent. It is not based on last year's usage or the year before's usage, because I got an email from someone today who said, what about all these vacant properties, you know, that have sat vacant? How is that going to impact, they're not going to have to conserve, et cetera. So, just want to say again on the record, these are for individuals who have not been conserving, and it is only dependent upon the average for your lot size and your temperature zone. So, two questions to ask, and then hold my time, would be one, on the larger lots and those that have horsekeeping and some other issues, and two, for the temperature zone. I raised previously the issue of Studio City, parts of Studio City, some that it was not part, it was not considered the hot zone, and a lot of people thought that that was problematic. And you're redo, I know, looking at UCLA is coming back with a study, how will that be impacted by this if it comes back and says, actually, it should be part of the hot zone? So, those are my two questions, hold my time.
All right. If I may, first, with respect to the issue of people who have already been conserving, yes, people who have already been conserving, who are below the fifteen percent top level of their Tier One, their allotment, will see no effect from this. People who are within that fifteen percent, we're asking them to pull back a bit and try to save that fifteen percent off of that top level of the Tier One allotment. With respect to the issue of those who have businesses and have horses, businesses are treated differently from residential customers. For businesses, what is being asked is a two and a half percent reduction off of their seasonal average. So, for most businesses, I mean, we recognize that, that single-family residences with outdoor sprinklers have a much, much greater ability to cut back than businesses do. And so, to that extent, the burden being put on businesses in terms of a percentage cutback is less than what is being asked of residences. But I've, I've heard this issue of people who have horses and will say, well, we can't ask our horses to drink less. We're committed to work with them, we'll audit their businesses for them, see where we can have water savings to help them out. I'm more than happy to do this and come back to the Council with a report. But, you know, I think overall, we have to face the fact that we have a mandatory cutback, and if we don't do the cutback, our preliminary numbers show that we're all going to face something like a hundred and fifty million dollar increase, and that will affect all of us, rich and poor alike, you know, lifeline, low income, all of us. And so, we have to react.
And water hogs and non-water hogs, right? Okay.
Right. Exactly.
Okay. And the second question is on Studio City.
On Studio City, I'll ask Greg Black to respond to this because we do have.
I can respond to it. The, we have, we are reviewing that temperature zone, we have had the study completed, we expect to have that finalized by the end of this month. Our understanding from talking with the consultant is there is minimal changes, I don't know exactly what the changes are specifically to Studio City. We are also going through a water rate restructuring. So, to the degree that we see differences in those temperature zones, we will incorporate that as part of our water rate restructuring, because it would take an ordinance change if there are some temperature zone differences.
And I think, and I've seen emails, you've responded to my community, thank you very much, in looking at that, but I think the fear is, what's the timing? And so, I'd just like a report back, not only to me, but to the community, as to the timing before this goes into, into effect for that summer months, and where we're able to identify, because, again, I feel like across the street at Coolwater, it's just as warm on one side of the street as it is on the other. And so, I know you've heard me say that before, so I won't repeat myself and from the community. But for those that are present here, and I know Barbara Monahan Burke is here and probably talk about it, we want to make sure that that gets resolved going forward and the impact on that.
Sure.
Two other quick issues. One, if you could respond to the hospital issue, we all received a document today and the concern by the hospitals, if you could respond to that.
Yeah, and we have talked to those representatives.
And hold my time, thank you.
The treatment of existing commercial hospitals that have not been upgraded or have not had significant changes in operations, we have looked at one of the larger hospitals in our service territory, and if there were no changes in operation, if they maintain their landscaping the same, they would have a rating increase somewhere around point eight to point nine percent, less than a percent. We have great opportunities for hospitals on our rebate programs for either waterless or one-pint urinals, that the Department's rebate program will essentially pay for that. It will pay for not only the price of the urinal, but the installation of it as well. Speaking with those gentlemen, they have some specific concerns to where they have expanded capacity at a hospital, or where they have taken different facilities and turned it into a medical facility, and obviously, they have different water needs related to hygiene and various health codes. And the ordinance allows us to look, look at those, the new use of that facility and establish a new Tier One for them. So, they will not be penalized based on the old use of that facility, or if you have a hospital that has increased in size by roughly one-third, we will adjust that Tier One based on that as well.
Okay. So, maybe, again, on a report back on this item too, is having a meeting, I know you've talked to individual hospitals, but maybe with, you know, a hospital association and others, and come back to report on us what you have found, and in fact, if there's any need to change something based on information that you have gleaned from individuals that you've spoken to, because I think we all understand that hospitals, you know, they don't have as much foliage outside, most of them don't, and really, the water usage there, they are is for the medical purposes, but we can all conserve and do better.
Correct.
Just two last things, Mr. Garcetti pushed very hard, and I know we supported Ms. Perry, which was with the Apartment Association and looking at ensuring how you look at specific areas to check where people, one apartment may be using a lot more water and the others are not, and they're all getting dinged for that, in a way in which we could address that.
Yeah, and we're going to engage very closely with apartment owners in order to sort this out, because in some cases, contractually, the landlord has to pay the water rates. In other cases, the code will allow a pass-through. If the pass-through is going to occur, one has to make sure that it's done fairly so that one water hog isn't treated differently from others who conserve. There's some issues there that we have to work out, but we'll sit with them, with the apartment owners associations, and sort through them.
And lastly, with the determination, or the article that appeared in the paper today about more water and different things, but MDVD, and I think Ms. Perry and I, I apologize, I was talking to someone, she spoke first, I think she read, and we all have another letter, they're still in their current position that they are cutting us by ten percent.
Oh, yes, yeah, and that is.
They've not changed that.
They've not changed, and I think, I think we're supportive of what they're doing because the additional hundred thousand acre feet has to go to storage, which is already perilously low. So, I think the position of Met is that that is, that is very welcome, but it will help alleviate an already worrisome storage picture, and I think, and I think the members of Met would be largely supportive of that position.
Okay.
So, the ten percent cutback is.
Sorry, I missed. I said that was my last question, but one, and just to summarize what I've asked, one on looking at larger horse facilities, Studio City and the hot zone, hospital areas, we've already talked about the apartment areas, I know Mr. Labonge will probably talk about appeals process. There's been a lot of discussion, so those are things I want to make sure that we follow through and get report backs to this, to the Council, to Ms. Perry's committee, is the issue of, if you had to do it over again in the last two months and making this declaration and moving forward, and the concerns people have raised about process, if you were starting over again before this, would there be changes that you would make in engaging the public and how we ensure that in the future, there's no challenges to process if there was enough time? And again, I know we, the ordinance that was adopted a year ago gave you some of that, but that's a question that may be asked by Mr. Rosendahl's and others, and you can answer, because since I'm over, in their time. But to talk about, are there things we can do differently in the future to ensure that there's enough public participation? And again, I think you did it within the letter of the law at this time, but let's look at that, and I'll let Mr. Rosendahl maybe follow up on that. So, you can just think about that between now and time, Mr. Rosendahl. Thank you, Mr. Garcetti, for your patience.
Thank you. Mr. Smith is next on the queue. Do you want to do the cards first, or would you rather? Okay. Why don't we do the public hearing now? Ms. Perry had carried over some of the cards because we lost quorum in committee due to the timeliness with Council, so some of the cards were for people that came to public comment there. They may or may not be here, but I'd like to read them and see if they are here. Is Stephanie Taylor here? She was on the for side. Miguel Luna is also on the for side. Dr. Clyde Williams on the against side. Yes, Mr. Labonge?
Multiple cards. Could we have one-minute public hearing, and if they need extra time, give it, so everybody gets a voice?
I think, it's the general public hearing, we have more cards than probably a twenty-minute normally, but if, why don't we make it a minute and a half at least? I think that mathematically we'll.
If they need more time, fine, but just.
We'll give everybody a minute and a half.
I want everybody to have an opportunity to speak.
So, we can't, we can't set the clock at a minute and a half, so just when it gets to thirty seconds, consider that zero. Dr. Williams, come on forward.
Oh.
Good morning.
I guess I understand what I have. Be happy. Don't worry until you get your bill. There's confusion, a lot of confusion. In fact, the resolution that you have before you today is the same as the last week. The clarifications are all talk. There's no revision of the resolution. So, we have to depend on what's being said. Hey, as long as everything that has been said is included. Hey, as long as everything that has been said is included, is the record controlling this resolution, maybe it's fine. I would hope that we can use the testimony as fact and as evidence when we get to appeals. The reported workshop where neighborhood councils is supposedly tomorrow morning, or at least it was said. However, if you go to DWP website, the calendar doesn't show it. There's no advertising for it. Where is it at? I don't know. Nothing has been presented that is practical and accessible to 4 million users and to the numerous neighborhood councils who don't know what's going on because--
Thank you, sir.
--the practical resolution of--
Our time is up. It was, that was a minute, 30 seconds, remember? So that, it's been a minute--
One minute, Eric.
Sorry, I think we're, we're past the minute 30 seconds.
Send it back to DWP.
Okay. Barbara--
Single water source.
Thank you. Barbara Monahan Burke is our next speaker. We'll set the clock at two minutes. When it gets to 30 seconds, we'll consider that at zero. Thank you. Thanks for your understanding, Dr. Williams.
I can't talk this fast. Okay.
Good morning.
It's Barbara Monahan Burke, Studio City, Department of Water and Power, MOU representative, but speaking personally because we have had no time to take this up formally. The intent of the city charter is public oversight by neighborhood councils of the city government with advisory capacity to the city council. We have a DWP MOU committee of NC reps that is now not being allowed to be at the table at the very beginning of a proposal to understand in depth all of the materials on an issue. It is of no use to us to have decisions of the DWP run bias at the last minute or not at all, as was evident in the Measure B debacle that ended in deserved defeat by the people. We need to have the outcome of the challenge the Studio City Neighborhood Council Board made to Studio City's designation as not being included in the hot zone. And I really ask, since due diligence was not done by the DWP as asked for by Council Member Gruel, I ask that we be put in that zone now and take us out later if there's substantive evidence. But I come home from work, and I'm wasting time there, but I have to say it. I work some physical work, some of my work. I come home at five and six o'clock at night, and many, many times on the boulevard in Studio City where they have the temperature, it says 100 degrees, 110 degrees. We are a hot zone multiple, multiple times within the summer in the weeks.
Thank you, Ms. Burke. That's right, a minute and a half right there.
That's it.
Yeah. If you would like to, if you'd like to submit that, we can--
Enough after all we've done through--
If you'd like to submit any of the things that you have there, we'd be happy to take them and circulate them into the Sergeant Arms. Our next speaker is Candido Morris.
I have time for--
Thank you. Excuse, excuse me, ma'am, I'm trying. Thank you. Candido Morris is our next speaker, and then DeeDee Audit will be after.
Thank you, Mr. President, Councilmembers. There's an old saying, don't worry about the water till the well runs dry. The well is dry, Mr. President, Councilmembers, and we're in a crisis. Ratepayers are worried, seniors are worried about flushing their toilets, families are worried about paying their bills, hospitals are worried about how it's going to impact them. It's going to take all of us together, working together to resolve this issue. I want to thank the DWP committee, especially Soladad Garcia, DeeDee, Diane, Todd Martin, Mr. Umberto Camacho. But I also want to thank Mr. Nahai and his staff. This is not the same DWP that I've been fighting for the last five years. They have made changes and they have made sacrifices, and they are stopping the waste that's take place. Just last week, they announced that they saved over $8 million in vendor discounts that they are capturing. Do you remember, folks, Mr. Ahan, it was the people from DWP, the janitorial custodial people that came here? It was the little people that did that for them. They also have a new supply chain system, so that we're going to save money there. They have a new purchasing process that they're doing there. We need to work together. I hope that you'll endorse Ms. Ahan's Blue Ribbon Committee. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Morris. DeeDee Audit is our next speaker, and then Soladad Garcia.
Give her my 10 seconds.
Thank you, Candido. Thank you, Councilmembers. My name is DeeDee Audit from Venice. Put it in a very short way. Here is how at least one of my constituents is looking at this. DWP is paying less now because it is receiving less water, but they want us to pay more. That does not make sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Soladad Garcia is our next speaker. After that is Umberto Camacho.
Thank you. Since there hasn't been any change made in the presentation since last week, we certainly would recommend that it would go back to DWP and let it stand. And if it does pass, then for 120 days, let it be reviewed and then go back to the original and start all over again. We know that, that we need transparency, and we know that we need communication. We've been working at it, and I understand that we'll, we'll be working at it at a future date. But take a look at what has happened as far as communication and the, the final, the final decision made by the board. It was in an area, Elysian Park, where there is no public transportation accessibility. That means that the people who are handicapped or people who rely on, on public transportation to get there, they didn't get there. There were about 10 of our people there, but the general public was not there. I would say to you that this is a violation of the Brown Act, and, and with all of the people that we have on the board who are lawyers, I'm surprised that this was allowed to happen. The, I would go on to say that the neighborhood councils have been working on, worked on the, on the MOU for 14 months. We'd like to see it happen and continue to expand and expand and put it to work so that we are advised before a measure is already there and we don't have time for enough input from the neighborhood councils--
Thank you, Soladad.
--to access.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Our next speaker is Umberto Camacho. After that is Jane Paul. Good morning.
Good morning, members of the council. My name is Umberto Camacho. I'm proud to represent District One on the BK Unit Neighborhood Council. And I'm going to talk about existing shortages or not shortages of water. I understand that we just got 30% water increase for the north this morning. And the fact is that DWP is going to have to learn to work with the community. Making this automatic increases on the tier without the consulting with the members who pay your, your rates is not advisable. And you're going to create more dissatisfaction among the rate, rate payers of the Los Angeles. It's going to come to the point that the, that the well is going to dry completely, and there's not going to be any money to pay your, your bills. And when some of us refuse to pay your bills, whether we have the money or not, it's going to be a chaos for the WP because they don't have no money to go into their cash. Miembros del Consilio de Cabildo de Los Angeles, mi nombre es Umberto Camacho. Estoy aquí porque estoy en contra de los aumentos automáticos del Departamento de Luz y Fuerza. No es posible que ustedes acepten un aumento que no está de acuerdo con las circunstancias económicas del pueblo que lo paga. Así que van a tener que hacer dos cosas. Enséñase a trabajar con el Consilio y con los miembros de la comunidad para que haya suficientes fondos para la cuestión del Departamento de Luz y Fuerza.
Thank you, Mr. Camacho. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Jane Paul is our next speaker, and then Jeff Jacobberger. Good morning.
Good morning, Jane Paul, the Green LA Coalition. Our coalition members urged the city council today to approve the Department of Water and Power's proposed water shortage year rate. The environmental community strongly encourages you to act today because the water shortage is real, immediate, and permanent. By implementing a tiered rate structure, the city can incentivize its residents to conserve water. Over the last two years, the council has affirmed both the necessity and the concept of instituting shortage year rates, and this is the year. I'd also just like to take a moment on behalf of Miguel Luna of Urban Semillas, who couldn't be here today. He's asking for and commending your leadership on water conservation by supporting the shortage year rate to protect water rights for all. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jane. Jeff Jacobberger is our next speaker. After that is Todd Martin.
Good morning, Jeff Jacobberger. I'm with the Mid-City West Community Council, but speaking on my, my own behalf. I was one of the primary drafters of the MOU on behalf of neighborhood councils, and I think the fact of the matter is, this rate structure was put in place in 2007 after a process that involved neighborhood councils to a very great extent, and we were involved in the establishment of the rate structure. And all that you were doing today is determining whether one of the triggering events for that rate structure happens. And the current rate structure has all sorts of procedures, you know, ranging from buying renewable energy sources, increases in, in the rates that MWD charges for water, and all sorts of things that cause our rates to go up or possibly down. And I don't think that the MOU requires a months-long process between DWP and the neighborhood councils every time one of those triggering events takes place. With respect to the substance of it, we absolutely need to conserve water. And I own a four-unit apartment building, and the per-unit usage of people who live in apartments is far below what it is of people who live in single-family homes. And that's because we use our water for the bathroom and the kitchen and the laundry. We don't use it for the discretionary outside water use, and that's what we really need to cut. And with all respect, and I wish that the council members who represent those of us who live on this side of the hill would actually advocate for water rates that protect us who live in, in a water-conserving manner and not favor people who live on big, who landscape huge lots in the valley where it's very hot. That's not fair to those of us on this side of the hill.
Thank you. Todd Martin is our next speaker, and then there was Larry Green.
My name is Todd Martin. I'm with the neighborhood, North, Midtown North Hollywood Neighborhood Council. Mr. Garcetti, an honorable member of the council. The city charter, together with the DWP MOU, both specify that neighborhood councils ought to be notified some 90 days prior to any action being contemplated by that department. Yet for the second notable time in a row, Measure B-- thank you. Measure B and now the water rate tiering have failed to do so, offering reasons all of you, by your actions, seem to feel adequate, and so failed to order them to comply. Neighborhood councils were initiated to give all of you shareholder input in a more organized, lifted way. So how can we do that when we're given substantially less time to comply with the Brown Act and agendize an issue, notify the stakeholders, receive stakeholder input, and transmit those findings to you via community impact statements? Then adding insult to injury, your Energy and Environment Committee asks representatives and others to appear at hearings on an issue, in the present case, water rate tiering, and gives the DWP 45 minutes to present their case, and then turns around and graciously grants those who may wish to rebut or challenge the DWP's claims a generous two minutes, barely enough time to even begin to present their arguments. Should we not be granted equal access to the committee?
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
How about dividing the same amount of time to those who wish to stay in our position that time--
Excuse me, Mr. Martin. I'm sorry, that's the time. Thank you very much. We're doing a minute and a half per speaker. That's what, it was initially moved for one minute, and we, we had council move to a minute and a half, so I announced that we'd have that. And we don't have a 30-second thing on the timer, so when it got to 30 seconds, that's zero. But if you'd like to submit that, the rest of the letter, we'd be happy to take that from one of the sergeants at arms. Now there was Larry Green is our, is our next speaker. I'm sorry, sir, it was a minute and a half. We, we announced it a couple of times, and I've been announcing it as, as everybody's been speaking. Thank you. If you'd like to submit the letter, we'll make sure it gets circulated to everybody. Thank you.
Good morning, everybody. Good morning. Listen, I've heard about this yesterday, and you may or may not know this. I have a degree from Cornell University in public administration. I have an MBA, and I passed my CPA exam. And this is, this is ridiculous. I don't know how many of you, raise your hands if you live in the city of LA, of U5. Raise your hands if you live in the city of LA. Number one, number two, number--
If you could, if you could adjust the council as a whole.
Okay.
Thank you. Please, please adjust the council.
I live in the city of LA. There's plenty of ways that you can get the money without doing it on the backs of the people that live in the city of LA. I'm not a multimillionaire, and I'm not in poverty. I'm the vanishing middle class. So we have one out of five that lives in the city of LA. What about President Obama's bailing out the banks, bailing out the mortgage, bailing out AIG, maybe bailing out the auto companies? Bail out, bail out. I think there should be, every neighborhood council, from Pacoima to San Pedro, from Hancock Park to the valley, should be involved in every aspect of this. There's no hurry. There's no hurry. What's the hurry? What's the hurry? There's no water shortage in the state of California. Did Arnold Schwarzenegger say this? Do you know about all the water that's there from all the rains? There've been plenty of rains here in LA. You know, I appreciate the environmentalists, but you know what? I have a kind of philosophy. You want it, you pay for it. You want a new county jail, you pay for it. I am so against this. If you all pass this, this will prove everything that people thinks about politics is true. If you pass this without getting more input from the community.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Elaine Brown. After that is Diane Rosen.
Good morning. My name is Elaine Brown, and I live in Sunderland, California, and I want to thank Wendy Gruel for mentioning the rural lifestyle. I live in zip code 9104, which is rated high with 76 HCF winter and 130 HCF summer tops. That's based on a half acre, 43,560 square feet. I have two properties. Both of them are two acres, 8,200 square feet and 2,000 square feet in one and 80,000 in another. I am compared to that half acre, and that has been the case since this tier situation went through in the 90s. I have been overpaying for water for almost 15 years, and so have all of us who live in rural properties. This is the American dream, to have a piece of property where you can have a victory garden, which is the new thing, to where you can raise animals, I rescue animals. How am I supposed to pay for additional water? How can I get my animals to drink less water? Every time I water the hillside, I had to clear for fire clearance, and in order to prevent mudslides, had to put in domestic landscaping. Every time I water that, it's a necessity. If I put the water into my lawn, it goes back into the water table. But you're insisting that I cut back and conserve. I conserve so much that when I appealed, and there was an appeals process in the 90s, when I appealed, I was allowed to continue as I had been because I conserve. I mulch, I breeze my own compost, I have put in water-saving devices, I have everything on timers, I have everything in drip systems. Where's the help that I'm going to get? What am I going to do? I have five FY and I'm zoned for 42. I can't afford 42. I can't hardly afford five.
Thank you very much.
And in a minute, I may have to move out of LA altogether.
Thank you. Diane Rosen is our next speaker. After that is Connor Everts. Good morning. Or good afternoon.
Good morning, councilmembers, and Mr. Nahai. I'm Diane Rosen, the Encino Chair of the Planning and Land Use Committee. For brevity, the Encino Council agrees with everything that's been said before. What we want to do is to look at the larger picture. There is a fact that every Angeleno, every resident, has to understand that there are limits to the amount of infrastructure that the city can provide. Manufacturing infrastructure is not the same as the manufacturing of widgets, hamburgers, or automobiles. The more widgets that one produces, the cheaper they cost. That's called economy of scale. But there is no economies of scale when it comes to providing water, electricity, sewage disposal, solid waste, et cetera. The Encino Neighborhood Council is fearful that these skyrocketing utility costs, all of them, are going to destabilize our blue-collar, middle-class, working neighborhoods, which are the backbone of the valley. If, if these runaway costs continue, then the neighborhoods are going to have to look to a Prop 13-style solution. As it is now, DWP averages, am I on?
Thank you. Yes, but the time is up. Unfortunately, it's frozen. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Connor Everts is our next speaker, and then I think it's maybe Eric Bronner or Fritz Bronner? Hello?
Thank you. My name is Connor Everts from the Southern California Watershed Alliance. I am in support of this measure. It sends a price signal. I am concerned, though, I have to say, given the response of the comments here and at the Energy and Environment Committee the other day, that people don't fully understand it. I don't think they understand that the price of water is going up. That's the other part, while allocations are dropping, and that our water supplies come from a longstanding drought on the Colorado River as well as the eastern Sierra. I'm also afraid that often the city council may not understand the amount of rebates and programs that are available. For instance, for hospitals, there's x-ray machine rebates that save a huge amount of water. There are tools in a toolbox to be used. The city of LA has been long a standard in conservation. They have stepped up against it with a 20-year supply plan, and I hope that people understand that there are a series of programs, including dual meters in the San Fernando Valley in Encino, where my mother works. And I'm sorry, there's not more time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If we could please have folks in the audience respect the speakers while they're speaking, please. I'm sorry, what was your first name, sir?
Fritz.
Fritz, sorry. Couldn't quite read. Fritz Bronner.
Counsel, good morning.
Good morning.
I think the DWP has looked over, overlooked a couple of ideas on this situation. One of the biggest problems is there are thousands of homes, especially in the valley, that are K-overlay and agricultural areas. And many of these, if you look at your horse registration and your DWP trash pickup, beyond the other people that use other services for their manure pickup, there are thousands of animals. And I myself, I'm zoned for five horses. I have them in a backyard. And three years ago, we had temperatures that were 21 days straight over 115 degrees, 21 days straight. These animals not only need water to drink, but they also need water for bathing, and often they need misting, otherwise they'll die. A lot of these private backyards that are overlooked, not the businesses, you guys have ramifications for the business, but not like myself and my neighbors, you know, a lot of these animals, they also are part of small nonprofits, and they do a lot of outreach in the communities all around the city to benefit the city. Some of the ideas are that if these horses are registered, like mine are, why don't you use that data as far as registration so that we get some kind of help as far as relief so we can give water to our animals? The other idea is that the LA Horse Council and members of our equestrian community have outreach to DWP as far as ramifications, because these businesses, while they're under 2%, they also are under CUPs to do dust abatement. We have asked for relief to use recycled water, and they are falling far short in recycling their water and giving it -- they had pumps that supposedly are coming near Hanson Dam. Unfortunately, they miscalculated their pump rate. We could have regional storage facilities for us to get to as far as water. We got the water trucks, and we can use these water facilities to fight fires as well. Thank you for your time.
Tony McCann is our last speaker. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I'm Tony McCann with the DWP Committee. I guess it's afternoon. Just a couple of comments. One is, we attended an E and E committee meeting, it seems a long time ago, but I guess a little over a week, at where we were told by the city attorney that if the E and E committee did not approve the rate changes immediately, and the council did not vote in favor of that the next day, the sky would fall. We are here today, and as near as I can tell, the sky has not fallen, or at least we haven't been notified. This unfortunately seems to be a pattern in terms of how these kinds of issues are processed through the system. And while this is designed as a revenue-neutral change, I will assure you that for those stakeholders whose revenues are decreased because they pay more, they will not be happy or forgiving. This comes approximately 30 days before an election having to do with tax increases, and I don't understand why it would not be possible, in the interests of prudence, to do outreach, attempt to get buy-in from stakeholders, and live to fight another day. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That will close our general public comments on these. And Mr. Smith is the next in the queue, then Ms. Hahn, Mr. Zine, Mr. Labange, Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Alarcon, and Mr. Reyes, and then we have Ms. Perry on a second time. Mr. Smith.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And Ms. Grul and I seem to be sharing notes today, so I had a lot of the questions here, but I want a little clarity on a couple of them. If you would please, first of all, tell me, I don't understand how if somebody has been for the last five or 10 years doing their job, really doing a good job of conserving, lowered their baseline, how they're not going to get trapped into being asked to conserve more? How is that, how are they not caught up in that downward spiral?
Because, because the, okay, let's think of it this way. We each have an allotment. We'll call it a tier. We have a tier one and a tier two. So if I'm in tier one, and I'm using at 85% of my tier one, that's my water use, then that tier one, the upper limit, is reduced by 15%. It will meet my water use. So I won't have to conserve any more than that.
Okay. So their baseline is based on the historical average, not of their personal use, but for the rate, the tier they're in.
Yes. These tiers were established back in 1991, pursuant to a very long-drawn-out process at the time with the Blue Ribbon Committee. That structure, which we're going to be revisiting, all of us, is not being changed by what we have here.
So my neighbor and I have the same house, same family. I have been conserving, they haven't been. I'm at 85%. They're at 100. They're not going to have to get to 85, but I can stay at 85, and my, I don't change.
Exactly.
Now, if I was over that, though, then I'm going to get caught, and the difference will be what they'll be charged on then. So let's say I was operating at 90%. I'm 5% over the allotment goal. And I'm going to get charged just for that 5%?
Right. Your 5% will now be a tier-two rate.
Very good. So for those that have been doing it, they're not going to get wrapped up and penalized for being good citizens?
That's exactly right. This is what makes this a fair proposal.
And that's good, because I don't think that's been really well explained to people. I know those are the questions I've gotten most. Let me ask about the multifamily. I understand you've done some reductions and change in allocations. Has that caused us to look at rate structure pressure on the rest of those people paying now, because you have to make up whatever reduction you've made for multifamily?
The multifamily apartment buildings are treated as other businesses, which means that for them, the reduction has to be 2.5% below their seasonal average. That hasn't changed. That's been the way it is. I guess it just needed additional explanation.
All right. Hospitals you've dealt with. One thing I want to bring out is we've heard from some of the horsekeeping community, and I have one of the largest, if not tied with the largest, horsekeeping community in the city. And I've fought with those folks many years about registering their horses with animal regulation. It is estimated by Corral 54 and other horsekeeping groups that probably half the citizens don't register their horses. So as we look at finding ways to provide those that have horses the ability to recognize we can't reduce the amount of water we give them, they must have that for life support, that we do not give any special rates for those that don't register their horses. Because if they have chosen not to register their horse in the city of LA, we should not recognize that fact in this water rate. And I want to put pressure on them to go out and register their horse. So don't give them any special rates for their horse unless they register their horse with the city of LA. And I'm going to ask you to do that. And also, really, for the horsekeeping community, those that do it right know that all the money from that we get from their registration, which is only 15 bucks a year, every pin of it goes to horsekeeping trail maintenance. So they win. But I want to just make sure that those people that walk in the door and say, "I've got three horses, and you can't stop me from giving them water, and I want a special rate," we're going to say, "Then register your horse, and we'll recognize that fact." So would you do that for us? Thank you very much. And finally, my staff, and I had a meeting yesterday with my regular weekly staff meeting, and they all said they're totally confused on how to answer these questions. I would like to ask you, besides just the webpage, if you could get a frequently asked question sheet out with very simplistic answers to all the council offices and any other public entity that wants them. Neighborhood councils should get all this, should get the same thing, on how to answer those questions for those people that don't understand how this system is working. I think Wendy asked the right questions. I think I clarified more, but there's a lot of people that are not clear the fact that if you're doing it right, you don't get penalized. And I think that's the message that has to get out there. You do it right, we won't penalize you. That's what we want, is people to do it right. So if you could do that for us, I'd be very happy, and I'll continue my support of this, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Ms. Hahn is our next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. President. One of the things I thought we could clarify, because I still think it's a bit confusing, is maybe you could clarify to us when this short water rates were adopted.
There was, the ordinance that gives rise to the action before you today was adopted by the board on October 2 of 2007. It was then reaffirmed by the board on February 8 of 2008. The LA City Council subsequently approved an ordinance with the amendments on March 22nd, 2008, that entered into effect on June 19, 2008.
So these were not part of the 1993 recommendations from the Blue Ribbon Panel?
Oh, I thought you meant what is immediately before you today, the concept.
The short water rates.
Yeah, yeah, the shortage of water rates.
Where did this come from? Whose idea was this?
It was devised back in 1991, but it was never enacted.
Right. So we never voted on these short, this city council never voted on this short water rate structure?
On the shortage rates themselves that are before you today, you haven't voted on them.
Right. So you keep referring to this 2008, 2007, like somehow we voted on that. These were, this was, this--
No, no. Counselwoman, to be correct, this is the rate structure that was brought before you last year, and I believe you voted on it in April of last year, and it took effect in June of last year.
We voted on, but the--
And the shortage rates are--
The rate structure for when we felt we were going to have a shortage was adopted in 1993. Is that correct?
The--
I'm trying to figure out what, you know, I have, what, what--
The--
Long time ago. I don't think this council voted on this short water rate formula.
On the concept of shortage rates, I--
Right.
--that predates.
Hold my time while they're trying to figure this out.
Well, I think we're trying to--
Maybe if I could clarify a little bit. In the early 90s, as part of the merit at times Blue Ribbon Commission, they came up with water shortage rates. And those water shortage rates were developed in the 90s. When we came for our water rate ordinance that we're under right now, it included some changes to that structure of the water rate, shortage rates, that you're voting on to enact now, but that was voted on as part of the--
We made some change. What changes did we make?
It was, it was changes, as I recall, to increase what the, where we look at that the percentage of, and to clarify, the percentage increased like to the 44%. I don't remember what it was before off the top of my head, but it was adjusted.
I believe that it was the variation between the tier one and the tier two.
Right.
So that we could have, give an accurate price signal, because the difference between tier one and tier two was too close to give an accurate price signal, so we made a revision to the rate to accommodate that.
But the concept came in from this Blue Ribbon Panel in 1993, that--
Yes.
--when we found ourselves in a shortage time, we would institute this rate structure.
Yeah. And maybe I can add a bit more clarification. I hope it's a clarification. And that is, this is why we're in this rather special process, which we talked about the last time we were before you, in that the city attorney stood up and said, "Well, no, the city council can basically either disapprove this, and if the city council doesn't affirmatively disapprove it, it will become enacted." So this is what springs from the ordinance that was already voted on by the council.
And tell me what the purpose of the short water rate are. Is that to raise revenue, or is it to conserve, to encourage people to conserve? What's the purpose of these, of this special rate?
What it is, is a constraint of tier one. The primary purpose of it is to induce conservation, but--
So it's not to raise revenue?
Well, but there are additional things that happen when you do that, and that is that you do also reduce your revenue as a result of the additional conservation.
But what's the point? What's the point of putting in this rate structure now?
The point is that we now, we now have, I mean, the debate on the water shortage is now surely closed. Everybody will accept that we have a water shortage. We don't have, we don't have the water to provide. So unless we buy it at a much, much, much higher rate from the Metropolitan Water District, and that will put us, if we're in that 10% bracket.
So we're hoping, so we're hoping this rate will cause people to conserve and will have enough water.
Yes.
Now, so MWD is going to ration our water by 10%. Is that right?
It's going to cut it back by 10%.
Right. And we're short, so we would be short 12%. Is that basically your figures you're saying? So I guess the question that I have people asking me, then, why aren't we instituting a 10% water rate shortage as opposed to 15%?
Well, I think our shortage is--
If we're going to be short 12%, why couldn't we do the 10% one and encourage more people to conserve?
Well, I think by going for the 15%, hopefully we'll ensure that we'll meet the 12%.
Yeah, and you know, with, yeah, you know, I had a problem with this last week, and I sort of still have a problem with it, because, again, I pointed to my resolution a year and a half ago where I said, "Heads up, everybody, we're going to have a water shortage." I had a whole day, we had a whole day on the city council that talked about the water shortage. We knew this was coming. And again, and I'm particularly concerned, like 70, over 70% of the water is for landscaping in the city. So, you know, and even in my motion, I specifically said, "What is DWP doing to incentivize these water-friendly landscaping?" I mean, we should be giving grants to homeowners to put in water-saving landscape, like we do low-flow toilets or refrigerators that cut back on electricity. The problem I have with this idea, and again, I wasn't around in 1993 when the concept came up. It seems to me in 1993, and I know you weren't around either, but in 1993, when a panel even suggested that there would be the day that would come that we would have a water shortage, it seems, again, we're working backwards. We have the water shortage, and now we're going to penalize people to make sure they don't use water, when in fact, we should have been years ago putting in real conservation efforts in the city of Los Angeles, so we would never even come to this day.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn.
I mean, we really shouldn't be 12% short right now, no matter if they are cutting our water back. We should have prepared for this. We should have put in mandatory conservation requirements on people. So if this is not to get revenue, but to make people conserve, I think we're doing it backwards. You don't wait till you have a water shortage and then decide to put a rate in, you know, to have it, and I know my time's up, and it's why you know, colleagues, that I think it's time we have another Blue Ribbon Panel that takes a look at these rate structures. So I've introduced something today, that the council would be able to create a green Blue Ribbon Commission, where, because we haven't looked at this since 1993. Thank you. And I think we need a citizens' commission that takes a look at all these ideas to figure out, number one, how can we do a better job of incentivizing, not penalizing, but incentivizing people to conserve, and take a look at this whole rate structure, ID, and see if whether that fits 2009 like it did in 1993.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. I know that motion's been circulated. It's available for the public as well on the side. Mr. Zine is our next speaker. Mr. Zine?
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. President. And if you hold my time, please.
As soon as you're done talking.
Pardon?
As soon as you stop talking, that's when we hold it.
I stopped talking. What's the rush, Mr. Labange? This is about rates for the people. We need to take care of the people. Thank you. Okay. Here's my water and power bill. My water and power bill tells me that my first tier is 11 HCR, 100 cubic feet.
HCR.
And it says, first tier 11, and total water 11. So obviously, I don't use a lot of water if you're using 11. But I look at this, and I say, what, how much can I use? What's the ceiling? It doesn't say. There's no way for me to tell by looking at my bill how much water, if I'm going to be within those boundaries, or if I'm exceeding those boundaries, how are we going to inform the consumer that looks at their water and power bill and says, "I can use 25, or 40, or 50, and I'm at 11, so obviously, I'm well below, so I don't have to worry about conserving. I'm already conserving." The bottom line is, I'm already conserving, so the question is, how do I know how much I'm conserving over what my allocation could be? How do we inform the consumer? How do we inform the consumer? Because according to the bill, which you and I reviewed this morning, there's nowhere on there where we know. How are we going to determine that? Hold my time, please.
Well, first of all, I think, let me thank you for the exemplary job that you do, council member. You're at 11, your, your, your low season tier one is 34, so you're using about 33% of the, of the rate of your allotment, which is, which is very admirable, and it shows what people can do.
And I take a shower every day, by the way. Sometimes two.
We'll, we'll take your word for it.
I got no hair, so I don't have to, I don't have to use a shower.
I'm sorry, that's completely out of order, Mr. Zine.
Mr. Labange is out of order, again.
But you provide a wonderful example of what it is that we can do. But I think that your point is very, very well taken. If you take a look at that bill, it's not going to tell you what your upper limit tier one is. So we have to, we have to do a number of things, obviously, as I said.
So how are we going to tell people so they'll know? Okay.
A call to 1-800-DWPP will suffice to inform people of that. A visit come May 1st to ladwp.com, which is pointing in the address, will provide people with that information. I'm going to task our Public Affairs and our IT Department to put a bill insert in the bill, so that people, when they get it, they'll have that information as to what their tier one is, and what it is that they need to pick up.
But instead of them calling and tying up the DWP representatives, why can't we just put it on the bill? It's like when you have a credit card, it tells you how much you can spend, and where you, why don't we be logical and say, "You can, your tier would be 33, or 43, or whatever, and you're at 11, so you're safe, you don't have to worry about cutting 15 or 20%. You're way below because you're conservative." Why do we have to make it complicated? Why can't we make it real simple, and put a field there to say, "This is the maximum you can go, and if you exceed that, then you're going to get socked with a penalty"? Why can't we do a simple thing, Mr. David?
And we talked about this a little bit as well. We're in the, in the process of overhauling an antiquated billing system at DWP. The billing system that produces that is something, I think, about 20, 25 years old. And we've set about making the necessary investment and dedicating the resources in order to update it, so that we can have exactly that kind of information. What I would actually like to show at some point is to show the DWP charges in a different font, or a different color than the other city charges, so that people don't think that that bill consists only of DWP charges, and that I've been hammering on now for the year and three or four months that I've been GM, and I'll continue to hammer away at it. But we do have certain limitations that we have to adapt to.
Because if I look at this sewer service charge, city utility tax, solid resource fee, I got a solid resource fee of $72.64. When I make the checkout, it goes to DWP. State energy surcharge, 11 cents, but the municipal services subtotals $135, non-DWP, which you're getting socked with the blame, is costing me all this money, and we're not really informing the consumers as we should. When can we have that information, basic? Because when people look at HC, they don't know what the heck HCF is, they look at 11, they don't know what 11 means, because there's no reference to say what it's about. It could have been 25, I wouldn't know what 25 is.
I think your point is very, very well taken, I won't...
And maybe we need to educate them, to let them know, but you're saying 15% reduction, correct?
15% reduction from the upper limit of tier one. If you're already 15% below, you have nothing to worry about.
But if you don't know your upper level, then you don't know where you're going.
That's exactly right, and that's why we have to make sure that everybody knows what their upper level is.
Are we going to do that before we implement a program, so people will know?
Yes.
Are we going to do it after the program's implemented, where they start getting socked with the additional fees?
Remember, this, this program, if passed by the council today, will enter into effect June 1st. Part of the reason why we're here before you today with a sense of urgency is because we've got to get this in place before the summer months hit, and we have between now and June 1st to do whatever is humanly possible, to make sure that everybody knows what is happening here.
Well, they know they're going to get socked with additional fee, but how about telling them what they're talking about?
Our next speaker is going to be Tom Labange. Thank you very much.
Well, I'm going to stand on your time, because you stood on my... You could continue, Mr. Zine, hold up your bill right now. Put the municipal bill in one hand, and put the water power bill in the other hand, split it. Put one bill, Mr. Nahai, and I've asked you before, and there's a motion around, in one color, the municipal bill, because you get hit unfairly on that. Put it in one color, and then put the other one in green, whatever it is, so people understand it. And what Mr. Zine just said about HFC, or HCF, whatever it is, make it simple. Mr. Zine, Mr. Labange, Ms. Han, whatever the name, Mr. Nahai, you are doing well, or you need to help, because that's real important to simplify. Real quickly here, if I can ask, our sources of water, and we must understand that, from Los Angeles, from LeVining, Mr. McDaniels, how wide is the creek that starts the water flow into the aqueduct? Is the distance between me and Mr. Reyes?
Probably narrower than that.
Narrower, it's narrower. Just to understand, this little valued asset called water comes from a narrow creek. And also, the Colorado River. In Lavalun's time, God rest his soul, when, how much water did we get out of Colorado River? Hold my time.
About 50% now.
We, we've gotten, it varies between what, how, how the hydrology is in the Colorado Basin.
Forty years ago, we got 50% out of the Colorado?
MWD would get up to 50% out of the Colorado. The city of LA, actually, we got most of ours from our own LA aqueduct.
But now it's going to Arizona, right?
Correct.
And other places.
California is limited to 4.4 million acre feet.
And God bless Pat Brown, when he built the aqueduct, but what are we getting from the state?
This year, we're not going to get very much from the state. It'll probably be...
Well, this year, MWD, which gets the water from the state, is facing a 70% cutback. So we'll only get...
70%, 7-0.
Yeah, we normally, Southern California normally gets about 2.2 acre feet. We're only going to be 2.2 million acre feet, we're going to be getting, I think, 30% of that.
Mr. McDaniels, what's your very unfavored song on K-Earth 101? It never rains in Southern California, and it absolutely never rains in Southern California. We have a problem here. We have a problem. Owens Lake, are we putting good water in that lake? And is there anything we can do to try to get more water to LA? Hold my time.
We were just up in the Owens Valley two or three days ago, meeting with stakeholders, with the local communities, to make sure that they're fully aware of the immense water challenges that we face, and so that we start a dialogue about the amount of water that we're leaving in the valley for environmental and other obligations.
Now, I'm proud of the work that DWP's doing with Owens Valley, but I also know that we need water, and there's a balance that needs to take place there. So it's real important on that. Reclaim water, how many pipes of, since January 1st, how many extensions of reclaimed water lines have been put in the ground? Any of you could answer the question.
You can answer that. We're about, what, now, 8,000 acres?
We've got about 8,000 acre feet a year of recycled water.
I know, but how much since January? Because I'm into, now, let's turn it on, Jim.
Yeah, we're about, probably up about 2,000, we have about 2,000 acre feet that we've added just this last year.
All right, well, we've got to do more.
We are.
Because it's there, and let's do it, it's real more. And members, I think, what is the most interesting change in our lives in Los Angeles, is the fact that, in the last 30 years, is how we collect the trash. We used to put the can out, and they'd take everything. Now we have three separate cans, and they're doing a great job in reclaiming and recycling and reuse it. We got to get that same mindset in our eyes on our power and on our water as well. I also want to protect recreation and parks, in our parkland and our urban forest. What benefit is there for record parks? And I know there's a representative from record parks. Explain what record parks may have to do, and that we don't want to lose things, whether it's playfields, golf courses, sports fields, et cetera. Hold my time.
Record Parks is devising a strategic plan in order to meet the water challenges that Record Parks and the other, and the rest of the city is going to face. Record Parks is moving towards smart sprinklers with grants from ladwp, and a number of the golf courses have already been put on recycled water, including Woodley, for instance, and we've got to move them as quickly as possible to use of recycled water for other golf courses and parks as well.
I don't want to lose that. Appeal process, tell us about that, and we'll be available citywide, so people don't have to come downtown, but could do it in their areas. Hold my time.
Correct, Councilman, there is, there's both a informal and formal appeals process. Informally, if a person has an issue with their bill, they can call the 1-800-DWPP number and try to resolve it then. If that doesn't work, they can, there's an administrative process, and we will have people available at the various offices throughout the city. And finally, if they're, if they're not happy with that resolution, they can come, there's a process to come before the Board of Water and Power Commissioners to appeal as well.
Okay, can I, Labange, one from our neighborhood councils, if I could have some, hold my time, explain what neighborhood councils are doing with the Department of Water and Power, and what ability they could use. Someone want to give the chair?
Mr. Labange, you have four seconds left.
Good, I said, "Hold my time," thank you.
I am holding your time, you have four seconds left.
All right. You can sit down.
Let's question, Councilman.
Your neighborhood councils, you're developed to help and spread the information, whether it's public works, public safety, water, power. What kind of relationship do neighborhood councils have with DWP, and how could it be better?
We're more than happy to work with DWP. We have a network of communications going out to neighborhood councils. Currently, our relationship isn't as strong, but we're currently very open to working with them to get the word out about water issues.
But why not? Is it not that strong?
We haven't gotten communications that the department wanted to work with our department on any systematic basis.
Well, all you've got to do is go to 111 North Hope Street, and they want to work with you. I know Mr. Nahai's committed to, and their door's open, you go up to the 15th floor. Lastly, I close with saying, I asked that we have a program where we ask the weather people from television to be water ambassadors, so people could know, "You don't need a water today if it's a degree." Could you do that, Mr. Nahai?
Yes, sir.
Call Arnie Kleiner and all the rest of the general managers. I thank you, members, we're in a crisis.
Thank you, Mr. Labange.
We have to take crisis steps. Thank you, Ms. Perry.
Thank you, thank you so much. Mr. Rosendahl, you're up next.
Thank you, Madam President. In this morning's LA Times, Bettina Boxell talked about the allocation of water in the state, and she basically said, "For the second time in a month, state water managers are upping the amount of water they say they will deliver to the central and Southern California this year." And her last paragraph says, "Los Angeles is also about to adopt a conservation plan that would make heavy water users pay a penalty." Is there any relationship between what you're doing, what you're hearing from the state? Hold my time.
Yes, it was, it's the state's cutback from the state water project.
So explain that to the public.
Well, Jeff Kaitlinger is here with us, and if you like, we could hear from him directly as to the action.
Please, and I'd just like to hear a response to the LA Times speech, which I thought was, was, was interesting for me to see the day we're doing this.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Councilman. Jeffrey Kaitlinger, General Manager, Metropolitan Water District. Our allocation did go to 30%. That's typically how the process works, it starts low and builds as the year goes on. But as you can tell, 30% is not a very good grade. We are still tremendously short of water. With a 30% allocation, Metropolitan expects to pull out of its reserve about a quarter million acre feet. That's at 30%. I would not be surprised to see the allocation rise as high as 35%, but that still leaves us short. We're still going to pull water out of reserves. We're going to cut our deliveries by 10% throughout Southern California.
You're going to do it, you're going to cut 10%, period? Okay, keep going.
Yes. And so we urge all our cities to do the steps that are going on, that you're discussing today. We're working with all the cities throughout Southern California, all 300 water purveyors to go and put into place these actions, so that they can do that reduction.
Because you consider this an urgent moment?
Exactly.
Okay, so we're not playing politics here, maybe the process needs to be improved, maybe the outreach needs to be improved, maybe Mr. Zine pulling out the bill needs to be clearer and simpler for people, but we are in a crisis.
That's exactly right, sir.
We don't need to play games on that issue?
No.
Okay, thank you. All right, next point I want to make is, is can we get that billing system redone, so a simpleton like me can pick up my bill and figure out what I'm doing? Hold my time.
We have to get it redone, it's in process, this is, I want to be...
What's your timeframe about the process? Because if I want to be diligent, I want to be a good guy and all that, I want to look at my bill and figure it out, when will I have a better understanding of how to read my bill?
I can't answer that question right here, right now.
Okay, can you come back with a report on that at another time? I want to know a deadline and a timetable of making the bill, so people like me who paid the bill, I want to know what I'm paying. Okay, all right, all right, that's, that's point two. Now, you have been doing a lot of conservation projects. When I first got onto this council, I talked about waterless urinals, and boy, the unions came at me like, you know, flies, and they explained to me why they couldn't do it. And then I saw a dramatic change happen over the last three years. Are we going to have a policy that every government building will have waterless urinals? Hold my time.
We have, we have numerous programs for governmental buildings, we've audited, I forget what the number is, how many? 497 buildings, we've audited, to try to bring down their water use and their, and their power use. So, for instance, Haynes and JFB are getting retrofitted as we speak, with either, with lower, low water use urinals, or waterless urinals. On the government sector, in terms of saving over the last year and a half, I think we've saved something like, what, 40%? Or something like that, the number is, is very, very large on the governmental side. Throughout the city, by the way, we have a saving over the last year of about 7.5%. So, so we're doing a good job, it's just not enough, given, given the exigencies that we face.
Okay, could you also get back to us with all of the conservation plans we now have in place? I did get those two light bulbs at my door in a little bag, and I had the turnaround wheel, and so on. I would like a very simple thing I can attach to my refrigerator door, that gives me five or six things I should always be thinking of, when I'm thinking of water, so that I can stay focused on it, okay? When Jane Paul spoke from Green LA, it was compelling enough to me from environmental, yes, but that's a little confusing, show that to the, hold my time, show that to the folks. No, no, just right now, to the camera.
Okay, there we go.
Yeah, okay, but explain that, it's a little confusing, it's a little too complicated for me.
Well, it's a, what this is, it's a, it's a wheel, and it was handed out with the CFLs, in the, in the same package. And, and what it does, it, it says, for instance, you can turn it to landscaping, and it'll tell you if you step on your grass, if it springs back, and when you lift your foot, it doesn't need any water. It'll go on to tell you, "Don't water when it's raining." It'll tell you to reduce water loss due to evaporation and wind interference.
Hold my time, please.
If you water before 8:00 in the morning. It'll talk to you about installing smart sprinkler systems, to upgrade the sprinklers with new water-saving rotary nozzles. It has all of the information on how to, you know, what numbers to call, how to access the rebates and the incentives. It actually tells you how much water you use in your dishwasher, your clothes washer, your toilet, your kitchen and bathroom faucet, so, I mean, you know, it's done in a wheel, so that a great amount of information...
Okay, and let me suggest that your PR people do a little simple thing that goes on the refrigerator door, that a person can look at, a couple or three things, and everybody can play that wheel, okay? Another thing, when we have red flag days, my people realize red flag means you might have a fire up there, okay? Can you get that Phase 3, which I think we're going to be going to, and Phase 4 and Phase 5, and get it to the weather people, so they can explain what that stuff means, so that people can understand, no Tuesdays and Thursdays may be the only watering days, and so, so forth. All conservation methods, including the old days when we used to not take reused water for anything, we need to reuse water for absolutely everything, and that's part of your conservation plan. And the last thing I want to say is, once again, I live on the west side, we have yards, we want our vegetables and all of our flowers and so on, but in Mar Vista, the Mar Vista Green Garden Showcase is happening this Sunday, April 26, from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m. Hundreds of my Mar Vista residents have begun to change their way. They're getting rid of the green grass, and they're going more to ecologically complementing vegetation. And so this website, marvistagreengardshowcase.blogspot.com, go to that, and you'll see a tour this Sunday from 2:00 to 6:00. I urge people throughout the city to look at some of my Mar Vista residents who have gotten rid of the grass, and have put in drought-resistant plants that are beautiful in their front lawn.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl.
We have to begin to think out of the box on this.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you so much. Mr. Alakon?
It's your turn.
Stay with me. Your turn.
Good afternoon. I'm on, I'm on. I have four seconds. First of all, let me say that the question of whether or not the trigger has been established, I think, has been answered. The process was established in a previous ordinance. And my concerns, when I raised them in the committee over a week and a half ago, were relative to whether or not the NWD had declared that they were going to reduce our water. Having declared that, I think that represents a trigger very clearly. And I don't think we can... we would have to essentially be in opposition to the original ordinance that occurred before. And I don't think that's the discussion today. I think the trigger has been met. But how we implement it is, I think, of great concern. So there are certain things that I am concerned with that I want to get more information about. First of all, I do also have a large equestrian and livestock community. And there is no way to reduce the amount of water that animals consume. I mean, you can't tell your horse, "Don't drink that much water today." I mean, they're going to drink it. And so Mr. Smith asked a question in reverse, I think. He said, "You're not going to be giving special consideration to people who have horses that are not registered?" And the answer was, of course, "No, we are not." But he didn't ask the question, "Are you going to be giving special consideration to people who have horses that are registered?" Hold my time, please.
Yeah, the ordinance, the measure that's before you today does not provide for that. And I think, but what we have committed to do is to work with those who have businesses which involve livestock or horses, to see what we can do to reduce their...
I didn't mention businesses.
Well, you know, I thought we were thinking about businesses. No, right now it's not.
The answer is no. Mr. Smith, I think it's real important for us to create something of a special exemption for equestrian owners and people who own livestock. It would only be fair. Secondly, there may be other considerations for people who have special needs. For example, I don't know if anybody has a medical machine that may require water that they have at home and they may have to use water, or they may have to take three or four baths a day. I don't know, those things. And I couldn't possibly fathom the kinds of things that may come before us of people who have special needs. So I would ask, do you have a hardship exemption process?
We have a lifeline and low-income discounts, as you know.
I'm not talking about a discount. I'm talking about a process to discern if somebody should be exempted from the additional cost.
I think the appeal process is in place. Apart from that, I don't know.
Was that a yes or a no? I didn't get that. Huh?
Well, no, I think your question is whether there is a formal process in the measure to address special needs. The answer to that is no.
Okay, well, I think there should be.
Okay.
Okay, and colleagues, I don't know how we can do that, but I think, I mean, I would move that we create a hardship exemption process as part of this, and the program cannot be implemented until DWP has defined that process. That would be my motion. Mr. Smith seconds it. Thirdly...
Mr. Alarcon, if you could just hold for a second and if we can get an opinion from the city attorney on whether or not we as a body can take that kind of action today?
Good morning. David Hotchkiss, Assistant City Attorney. I'll answer it in two parts. Number one, there is an existing appellate process that was described earlier by Mr. Briavich in reference to any application of the rate ordinance to any specific customer. So to the extent an individual believes that the rates are being applied inappropriately to them, they have the right at first to informal administrative appeal to the department, and it goes all the way through the Board of Water and Power Commissioners. And then they have the reserved right to review that matter in the Superior Court if they feel that they are aggrieved. So there is a process that goes all the way through the concept of administrative mandamus up through the Superior Court and through the appellate courts if they choose to take it that far.
That's much too complicated. That's not what I was talking about. I think we need a simpler process. And I would like for DWP to... the motion is that we amend this provision so that DWP presents a hardship exemption process to the council that would be acceptable to the council. And that is not acceptable to me. It's much too complicated. Excuse me.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
It's my time. And I believe that we really need that because we'll never be able to define the kinds of hardships we will create if we don't provide these kinds of exemptions. Thirdly, the Secretary of Interior was just here telling us about all kinds of stimulus money that's coming to improve our water system. Will that have any impact? I'm asking Met as well as DWP. What will that do to have any impact on the availability of water?
Mr. Alarcon, your time has expired, but before we...
No, my time has expired because you, while you guys were talking, you kept the time running. I think I still have at least 20 seconds.
Actually, I gave you extra time. But what I'd like to suggest is if we can deal with the first issue that you raised, and the city attorney, I think, wants to make a comment on that before we go on to the next issue.
And as to the other item, which would be, what is available for the council's action today? Because of the ordinance and the provisions of the ordinance that you're working with today, the role of the council is but a single role, and that is to either disapprove or take no action in reference to the matter within the time prescribed. Because of the time constraints that we're dealing with today, the issue before the council is whether or not it will disapprove this matter. If it is disapproved, then the rate ordinance, the shortage year rates will not go into effect if the council disapproves this matter. If the council doesn't disapprove it, and we're asking for an affirmative, you know, vote by the council today, then they will go into effect June 1st.
May I be allowed to respond to a couple of matters that you brought up? If that's okay?
Yeah.
All right. I think it's important that we clarify this because I've just been shown some numbers. I mean, with respect to the lot size group, taking into account those people who have livestock and horses for private use, their original lot water allotment was about three and a half times that of other uses. So there was a lot of these things that was taken into account when this rate structure, which we're talking about revisiting now, was first put into place. Additionally, with respect to special needs, let's not forget that the original allotment that was done back in 1991 was fixed at 125% of what the use was. Again, taking into account special needs. But I'm more than willing to go back, try to come up with a process, and bring it back to you and present it to you within 30 days, council member. But, look, this is, you've heard now, not just from DWP but from Met, we're facing an urgent situation. And we really should not delay this any further. If we disapprove it, we're all going to end up paying a great deal more.
I also don't want somebody to die because we made a decision without providing an exemption process. I had a question to Met. And I'll press my button again.
Thank you.
Just real quickly, we're very pleased with the actions of Secretary Salazar, putting forward $260 million to California for drought relief actions. Those types of programs will help us protect endangered species where we're losing much of that water in Northern California. We don't expect to see an improvement in 2009. We would expect to see, we are hopeful we'll see improved water supply picture by 2010, 2011. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. You are up next, and then Mr. Reyes.
Thank you. And I will do my very best to be brief here. Appreciate the comments that have been made on both sides of this issue, though I don't think there's, like we have on many issues, really multiple sides on this. Everybody recognizes the need to conserve it, which is a good starting point from where we were probably 30 or 40 years ago. As I mentioned in committee, it's been my goal for the department and when I speak here, to make sure that we have a high quality of water, that we conserve water, and that we have a transparent process. And I was very pleased to co-introduce with Ms. Han a transparent look at rates and the motion that we put forward today, which will really have us do that kind of once every, it's almost 20 years since we've done the last one, breadth of looking at what our rate structure is in the widest sense. And I know you've been doing a lot of work with that, too, but I think we can help with the public process on that, and I think it would be a good time to move forward. I do want to dispel a couple of things that were said by various speakers, though, that we haven't done anything to conserve or that we should have been doing things a longer time ago. And as I said in committee, when the department gets things wrong, I certainly have not been shy about speaking up about it. And yet I also think when the department does things right. Right now, for instance, it was mentioned, I think maybe Ms. Han said, asked about landscaping incentives. There are. In fact, I just got, I just got for my, I have a rain meter for my water, and I just got some cash back from that through DWP and Metropolitan Water District. The problem is not that we don't have enough programs. I think what you're hearing probably consistently is how we communicate these. And it's a very difficult thing to do because we're not talking about a few people who are interested in one issue that's a policy issue. We're talking about every resident. And that is always going to be a challenge. But it is our goal, since we're the voice of the public, to help push and suggest, and not to be annoying for annoying sake, but to really let you know how difficult that is, even for those who are in the loop, to read the bill, to figure it out, to, you know, all the things that you've done. The water wheel is a great idea and a great suggestion and something to put forward. But for us to do this better, we really have to bring everybody along because we've only seen the tip of the iceberg. When this goes into effect, trust me, you know that you're going to get those calls. We're going to get those calls. And if we didn't do everything ahead of time, that's the frustration that I hear from everybody and that we can help you and work towards. But make no mistake about it, we are in a drought. We did not get plenty of water. The governor declared it. We have heard it from all of our sources. And we did go through a process, like Mr. Jacobberger said, that did involve public, neighborhood councils, and everybody else interested on this ordinance which we adopted in this council over a year ago. This is the first declaration of that. And we have to also look at how do we communicate that when the declaration occurs? And the reason why we sent it back last week and why I thought it was a good idea is we needed to have as many of these questions answered about our horse owners, about our larger lots, about some of the heat zones, some of the things that, yes, some of us know the answers to and other ones which have not yet all been teased out. What is that appeals process that Mr. Labonge mentioned? How do we make sure that people can get to it? Because somebody driving from San Pedro has a much longer drive than somebody who's, you know, in Echo Park, which is why Echo Park's such a great place to live, Ms. Han. But anyway, they have, I think, a lot of challenges to make sure that this is really felt citywide and understood citywide as well. I asked questions in committee, and Mr. Smith did this as well, I know Ms. Grue brought it up again today. And you alluded to it, Mr. DeHuy, we can't individually meter every apartment, but we really do have to crack this nut of multifamily housing. And you alluded that there is some technology that allows apartment owners to be able to monitor that without having to install individual meters for each apartment. And I'd really like the department to move as aggressively and work with our apartment association. That's the long-term fix. We dangle both a carrot and stick. A carrot that we can pass through savings to tenants to incentivize their saving. But we also know that sometimes tenants will do the right thing and one won't. And then they all get punished right now. So we also need the stick to be able to do pass-throughs. I don't think the apartment owners want a stick. They want water conservation, too. We all do. So the real long-term solution is how can we use those technologies and subsidize them as much as we have with low-flush toilets and as much as we have with water-saving appliances as we're doing now with landscaping and waterless urinals, all the sorts of things that we have? Whatever we could do to help department owners know about that technology, put it in place. I know so many tenants who want to be part of the solution, but they also don't have much of incentive to be part of the solution if somebody is cheating in their own building, essentially, as well. So for everybody who is listening and who heard that this is a raising of rates, if everybody reduces by 15%, 85% of people will see their rates go down. I'm holding the department to their word, as we all should. And I'm sure you're holding yourself to that word, that this is not a revenue generator. This is not about raising rates. 85% of people should, and we will work hard and you will work harder to make sure people know how to do it, reduce by 15%. Any of us who have been experimenting with this, it is not too difficult to do. People still shave with their, or brush their teeth with their faucet flowing. People have plants that probably shouldn't be raised here in Los Angeles. People have their sprinklers going off during the rain. I had an email from somebody who jogs at 5:00 a.m., and he wrote me on my Facebook page and said, "What can we do? I see so many overflowing sprinklers as I run at 5:00 a.m. that nobody even sees because they're not up." Those sorts of things that our drought busters and others can help us with, maybe even by driving around at earlier hours, can get us to the place, and Los Angeles wants to be part of the solution. But if we don't do this today, we lose the summer. And this is not about, the sky didn't fall in the last week, but the sky has fallen in terms of the drought. It is here, and we didn't recover from it this year, and it'll be many years before we recover. Los Angeles showed leadership before by consuming the same amount of water we do now as we did 20 years ago. This is another moment for leadership. You will look back on this and say it's the right thing to do while we get better at the communication of it to make sure nobody is left behind in that struggle. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Madam President. First of all, thank the staff for their efforts. In my district, we've had individuals who've been working very hard to conserve. They've gotten creative. They've used grassroots strategies. And I said this to Mr. DeHuy at another meeting, where these soccer leagues are educating their parents. The kids are learning from folks who have been advocates in conservation, water conservation. In my district, a lot of the folks, for some reasons, given their demographics, the poverty levels, water is being conserved. But also, you have this proactive approach. What I'd like to ask, and I've asked it before, if I can get that statistic that shows what our rates are like, I'd like to be able to demonstrate to them that their effort has not gone unnoticed, that their effort does reflect a certain level of reward, if you will, by showing how the rates will not increase because they have been conserving. And so we do have hundreds and hundreds of families who are involved in these grassroots efforts. We're going to hear, what they're going to hear in the media, you can hear from misinformed people, that we're increasing the rates anyway. And we need to be able to send the message that that is not the case, that those who have not achieved their goals, if they do conserve, will actually save money. And we're doing this in English, we're doing it in Spanish, we're doing outreach to all the multilingual, multicultural communities in my district. But we need to be able to overcome that message that the press will essentially, I believe, amplify because it always sells papers when the plane crashes, it's never when the plane lands. And so this is one of those issues that we need to be very proactive in how we're going to actually reward and support those individuals who have been doing their grassroots efforts and actually conserving. And I'm hoping that because of the crisis, we could have, and this is up to our council and our council president, but we can have a monthly meeting with you here in the public eye to have these discussions, have these updates of outreach. What technology is being used? If we're going to be dealing with the apartment rates and how we deal with the tenant and landlord tension and struggle in identifying water usage, update us. Let's have the whole city know how we're progressing and to demonstrate the good work that has been done and to be able to challenge the work that we question or doubt, again, in the public eye. And not, you know, wait every six months or yearly when all this anxiety and this tension builds up, it blows up, and no one's listening. We're busy fighting and getting to the emotional stages. So I appreciate the hard work, but I want to demonstrate to those who have been working hard that their rates will not go up and to be able to show in my district the number of folks who are reaching their thresholds. I would truly appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. And next speaker is Ms. Han.
Thank you. Again, I understand what everyone's saying, and clearly we're in a crisis. No one is denying that. I think, for me, this is about conservation. This is about trying to encourage people to use less. My question is, we've never, have we ever done this? Have we ever instituted this? We've never done it?
We've not done it.
Okay, so we don't really know. What if Georgia people decide we're just going to pay more? Or they don't, they're not thinking about it, or they're just, they just pay their We don't know whether this is going to conserve water. We don't know if this is going to get us to our 12%. I think that's my problem, colleagues, is that if this is our best strategy to conserve water in the time of a crisis, it's unproven, it's, we don't know how people are going to respond. And really, the message that if somebody gets a bill, they're, "Okay, you're okay," that's really not the right message for anybody. Everybody should be conserving. No one should feel like they can't do more. I mean, I'm not worried about being in another tier. I mean, apparently, my bill now is like at 11. Currently, I'm authorized to use 25 with this 15%. It puts me at like 21. I'm still way below. I'm a very low water, I think I was like the lowest on the city council, I think, except for Bernard. But, so it's not about me, but I should still be conserving. We should all be conserving. And I really appreciate what Councilmember Garcetti said. There are incentives, there are programs, but I don't think a lot of people know about it. So I'm really worried, colleagues, if this is our best strategy, this is the best thing we have, is to do this short water shortage rate hike. And we just are assuming that people will go, "Oh, I'm going to conserve because I don't want to pay it." There's a lot of people who don't think like that. And there's a lot of people that just take their bill and they pay it. Some people are very concerned about it. Some people, it really matters to them what their bill is. But there are a lot of people that may just say, "You know what? Okay, fine. So you get the revenue, but we haven't conserved the water." And that's what I'm concerned about. I just can't believe this is our best strategy in a time of crisis that we are just going to hope people will use less because they're going to be thrown into a different tier. That's why I want this green-blue ribbon commission. That's why I want a much more aggressive effort in outreach to people, educating people on how to conserve. We should be having PSAs on the days of week people can water their lawn. I think a lot of people still don't understand that two days a week. Which two days is it? You know, people don't, aren't getting that yet. And I will tell you, I know my time's over, I am very, very troubled by our general manager of Department of Neighborhood Empowerment, who says you do not have a good relationship with neighborhood councils. That really troubles me. You have an MOU, the first MOU in the city between a major department and the neighborhood councils. And to hear that the communication is bad, that it's not a good relationship, that's really troubling to me. And I've also introduced a motion, by the way, today that talks about your outreach and where you hold the workshops. You know, holding all the workshops down here is not outreach. That's saying, "Here we are, and if you want to find out, you got to come to us." It's not my idea of outreach. My idea of outreach is going where the people are. You know, that's part of what we've tried to do on the city council, is have other places for people to weigh in. We take our meetings to other parts of the city. Just having them down here, I don't think accomplishes that. So that's what I'm troubled about. I still don't even know if this gets us where we want to get to. We're in a crisis, but I don't think this is the best strategy to get us where we want to get to in terms of the entire city, everybody, no matter what your bill is, no matter what your water usage is. People need to understand, everybody needs to conserve. Everybody needs to figure out ways to reduce their water, and not just because of potential penalties.
Thank you, Ms. Han.
Thank you, Ms. Nahai.
Thank you. Mr. Zine, you're up next.
Thank you, and I'll make this as quick as possible. I think we're putting the cart before the horse. We haven't informed the consumers. The bills, as we discussed, don't tell you your highs and lows, what your allocation could be. Ms. Han, I think you said you're at 22? I'm at 11.
I'm at 11.
I'm at 11. So together, we are probably very low with the consumption of water.
We are.
I called drought, I called your 311 yesterday. As I was in the valley, I saw one of our businesses at noon had their sprinklers going. So I called 311, I asked to report this. I got the Water and Power, they said, "Well, we don't have a line to report that." I said, "How about customer service? If someone wants to report something wrong, somebody wasting water, the mechanism's not even there because the operator who took that call from 311 transferred to Water and Power, that operator didn't know what the heck to do with it." I went to customer service, they took that information. So I think if we're going to do something, it needs to be logical and sensible, and I don't think it's logical and sensible when I take the time to call and the initial person that takes that call doesn't know what to do with it at the Department of Water and Power. When we look at other cities, are we providing water to other cities, the Department of Water and Power, or is it strictly for LA City?
Just for LA City. Certain small parts of, small parts of West Hollywood.
Hold my time, please.
Mostly just the city of LA.
Okay, I understand Metropolitan provides the 26 member and 19 million Southern California residents. They do that on a separate contract. So our rates are our rates for our consumers. How are our rates right now compared to the other municipalities that Metropolitan is charging? Hold my time, please.
We would need to, we would need to compare it to other similarly situated municipalities. In other words, municipalities that are dependent, as we are, for 85% of our water from outside of the city. So it's transportation and filtration, but how do we compare in terms of other cities?
We're within the middle-third of similarly situated utilities, and those are utilities that operate water treatment plants, that operate big aqueducts. These are very capital and O&amp;M-intensive facilities, but they also provide us with additional reliability. We also have supply redundancy, and we pay for that, but we feel that we're giving our ratepayers a very good, a very good rate for the reliability of service that they have.
And I've got three golf courses in my district. We're doing no recycling at golf courses. We're not doing any recycling at athletic fields. What are we going to do to conserve water at those locations where we have beautiful golf courses? And that's a wonderful opportunity to be a sport. But what are we going to do about the consumption of water at those beautiful green golf courses where it gets 100-plus degrees in the San Fernando Valley? Mr. Smith has one also, maybe more than one. What are we doing about that aspect?
Well, we're all going to have to cut back our water use in the residential side. If we're in the top 15% of Tier One, we're going to have to reduce. If we're a business owner, we're going to have to reduce by the 2.5%. We're working with Wreck-Em Parks to move them towards recycled water, to do a strategic plan so that we won't all suffer a great deal of brown in our beautiful parks and our beautiful golf courses. But again, this is something that we're all going to have to share with, sharing. It's not like, you know, everybody wants relief, but they want that relief at somebody else's cost.
Well, I can't see, the water that goes into a golf course, why do we have to take that fresh water and stick it in a golf course? Why can't we use something other than refreshed water that can be used for the consumers instead of a beautiful golf course?
We can't. And the answer is recycled water for irrigation purposes. That is not something that can happen overnight, Councilman, as you know. We have to build the infrastructure to bring back hundreds of thousands of acre-feet of wastewater that we currently throw away into the ocean and bring that back up into the system. We have plans to do that. It requires a great investment on the part of the city, but we must do that because we cannot continue to rely on our external sources of water expanding. But those are long-term plans that we have to put into effect and which have been called for, by the way, by the mayor's water supply plan that was promulgated last summer.
And a question that was raised regarding apartments, the pass-through, the 2.5% multiple-family versus large apartments, small apartments, when are we going to get that worked out for the apartment owners and the residents of the apartments?
We're going to meet with the apartment owners associations and try to work through, these are not easy problems. As I said, in some instances, by contract, the landlord has to pay the water rate. In other situations, the landlord, under applicable codes, can pass through the increases. How does that occur fairly? How do you make sure that you don't penalize a good conserving tenant while, in effect, not recovering the proper amount from the tenant that is not conserving? Those are things that we're going to have to work through.
But are we going to work those through before or after we implement?
Well, the implementation will be June 1st. We have to move towards that. So it is my hope that between now and June 1st, we'll certainly meet with the apartment owners, with renters groups, and try to work through these issues. But I cannot guarantee that we'll have them all done by June 1st.
Well, I don't think we're going to have a lot of it done by June 1st, other than that people are going to be penalized. That's what troubles me. We don't have our act together for the consumers. We're not going to tell them the high and the low, what they can use, what they don't, when they're going to save it. We're not telling the apartment owners and the dwellers what, in other words, we don't have our act together. We're going into a football game and we don't have a coach. How are we going to, how are we going to win the game?
I would, I would...
Thank you, fans of the sports field. Thank you. But I'm serious, we don't really have it together.
You know, it may be...
And we've been working on this for how long? This isn't overnight drought. It hasn't been raining for a long time. We knew it was coming. But what have we done to prepare? To educate, to inform the consumer, the people who get the bill like my bill and don't understand it because it's not explained?
All right, we can talk about all those...
I don't want to be chipped. I like you as a person, but you know what? It frustrates me, because I've met with my consumers, my residents, my voters, they're unhappy. They think it's a rate increase, plain and simple. They don't look at it as anything other than a rate increase. And how do we convince them it's not a rate increase when we can't give them the accurate information that doesn't exist because the computers are outdated? It makes no sense. It's frustrating for me, for them, and I'm sure for you. But you're the multi-billion-dollar department that has the computer, the technology, the folks, we got to plan these things before we do it. And we're rushing it because June 1st is a deadline because of summertime, yet we haven't had rain in a long, long time.
Mr. Zine, your time is over. Thank you. Mr. Alarcon, who has waited patiently and respected the rules, is now up.
So far. I just want to reiterate my amendment to provide for a hardship exemption process. I would like to ask the department to come back with a process that would be respected from the date of implementation, so that if somebody qualifies for the hardship, they would retroactively be reimbursed if they were overcharged relative to that exemption. The kinds of exemptions that I would foresee would be where somebody has registered horses or other livestock that, that they simply cannot reduce their water consumption without causing severe damage to their livestock. Also, people who have medical needs. I'll give you a scenario that's actually one that's very close to my family. My mother no longer resides in her house, so she's not, I hope there's no water being used there, but, so she's not using it, but she has to live with my sister. And my sister's water use is probably going to increase significantly because, but my mother's not using any water. My mother, who has Alzheimer's, would, you know, leave her faucet on for days and days. And so, you know, there's going to be a lesser consumption as a group, but individually, my sister's going to bear, have a tough time lowering her water standard since her, since my mom just moved in a month ago. So those are things that I think are legitimate reasons why somebody should get an exemption from, from the increase. Essentially, it's not really an increase, it's, or I should say, it's not really, it's not really their fault that they're going to have to use the water allocation. And then finally, there may be people who are, have been extremely drought-conscious. Ed Begley comes to mind. I mean, he's reduced everything he can in terms of consumption. Why should he be penalized if he can't lower it anymore? And so I hope that there is an exemption for people who have been so conscientious that they simply can't reduce their water use anymore. So I would hope that by offering this amendment, we would then approve the ordinance or the resolution by DWP, but at the same time, would require them to come back in 30 days describing the exemptions that, and how they, people would, how they would process those exemptions. And finally, the mayor is asking us to come back with Phase 3 on Tuesday. And if this is truly a water-saving effort, can you explain to us why these didn't happen at the same time? Is one, is the left hand not working with the right hand?
No.
Or, why couldn't we do this together?
They have, there's a different legal track for this matter and the Phase 3. The Phase 3 arises out of the Water Conservation Ordinance, which is a different ordinance than the Water Rates Ordinance, out of which this matter springs. So they go on different tracks. They happen to be coming to you at different times.
And finally, just, just as, I still don't understand why they can't be on the same timeframe, even though they're on two different legal tracks. I mean, we control the tracks around here. It seems that they should be on the same agenda so we could be talking about the same thing.
Sir, you're addressing that question to the wrong person.
Well, it wasn't a question, it was a statement. But finally, let me just point out, Mr. Nahai, that under Phase 1, parks and open fields must have irrigation systems and rain sensors. Are we in Phase 1?
Yes, we're in Phase 1.
Do our parks and open fields have irrigation systems and rain sensors?
You mean of the Department of Wreck-Em Parks?
Phase 1.
Yeah, I don't know what it is that you're looking at.
It says parks and open fields. I assume that's Department of Wreck-Em Parks.
Yeah, but you're not looking at, you're not looking at the ordinance there. It's a lot more than that.
No, I'm not.
Okay. So I think we would need to take a look at the language. I think what the language says that for large users...
It says must have irrigation systems.
No, sir, that language that you're looking at has that. That is not necessarily the language of the ordinance.
Item number 13, right out of the ordinance, "No large landscape areas such as parks and open fields shall have irrigation systems without rain sensors that shut off irrigation systems."
Now, what that is saying is that if there is an exemption, if they have those systems. And if they don't have those systems, then they're restricted, under Phase 1 now, they're restricted to watering before 9:00 AM and after 4:00 PM with respect to sprinkler use, but not with respect to handheld watering.
And we've been working very closely with Department of Wreck-Em Parks to get them into compliance with the requirements for the rain shut-off devices, and I believe that they have covered most of their parks.
So they are not, they are not in complete compliance?
Excuse me?
So they are not in full compliance?
To my knowledge, they are in compliance.
Well, no. What this says is, it says these provisions, in other words, the restrictions on watering, do not apply to, where is the language?
He's talking about this, this is prohibited use.
Where's the, where's the description of that?
Okay. No, but they're not in full compliance, Wreck-Em Parks, right now, are they?
We've been working very closely with them, and I believe they've got all their automated systems with the shut-off devices. There may be a couple of ones that I don't know about.
Okay, but I was under the impression that you've reduced the program for the rain-sensitive system, that we've reduced staffing and reduced the program.
The Wreck-Em Parks program?
Yes.
No, we're continuing on with that. We're installing smart irrigation sprinkler technology. We're getting ready to go to the next phase of that.
It hasn't been reduced at all?
Not to my knowledge.
Please check.
Well, we're in between phases, but I, we've made a commitment to move forward with them on the next phase.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Alarcon.
And I'm sorry, Madam President, is there a second on Mr. Alarcon's motion?
I believe Mr. Smith seconded that motion earlier. Our next speaker will be Mr. Wesson.
Madam President, can we move the previous question?
Madam Clerk, do we, can we take a vote on that? Is there...
Yes, unless there's any objection, you know, if there's no objection.
Moving to the previous question. We're voting on the matter before us. Madam Clerk, if you would read into the record, there are no objections to taking the vote at this time. Before we cast our vote, would you read into the record the item before us, please, with the amendments that came from committee? Well, right now, we're voting on whether or not to vote, so...
I'm sorry, Madam President, for clarification, is council voting on the previous question?
The item before us is the DWP resolution, whether to confirm or deny with amendments that came through Energy and Environment Committee and then went back to the Department of Water and Power Commission.
Right, and there is an EE Committee report that's before council that approves the resolution, and then recommendation number 2 is requesting the city attorney to prepare and present amendments to the Water Rates Ordinance, and there are two things included in that, and also Mr. Alarcon's amendment that he requested.
My amendment, the amendment from Energy and Environment Committee should be part of the report.
Correct, that is. And it's, recommendation A allows the city council a minimum of 30 days to review water shortage rate proposals, and then recommendation B requires the Los Angeles DWP, upon the implementation of shortage rate year rates, to provide the mayor and council with quarterly reports on drought conditions, the status of shortage year rates, and the need to continue or terminate them given the status of the water supply, and also that include Mr. Alarcon's amendment.
So Mr. Wesson has made a request to call to the question, so without objection, as we continue discussion, that then takes it back into discussion. So if we can please open the roll on this item. We're voting on the item as amended. Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Nine ayes, two noes.
Thank you very much.
Next item.
That item we'll go forth with.
That's it.
Next item, Madam President, there is a commissioner that's, item number 2, and also council has public comment. Do you wish to take a...
If we can, if there's no objection, the commissioner waited basically all day and could not wait. If we can, if there are no objections, we can take that item on consent. You can open the roll on the item, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
All right, next item.
Madam President, do we should take a public comment at this time?
We have no further items on the desk?
There are several.
We have a lot. We'll take general public comment right now, then. All right, we still have more items on the agenda, so we will have each person on public comment today speak for one minute only. Madam Clerk, if you can please set the clock for that. We have a large number of cards for public comment today. Our first speaker will be Dr. Clyde Williams, followed by Candido. Is he still here? Candido. Candido Mata, so if you're still here, come on up, and Phyllis Dougherty. Dr. Williams.
Dr. Clyde Williams, 40115 Barrett Road, El Sereno. Whatever happened just now, the public comments that I had was, kind of, think outside the pool. The drought is here. The drought... The drought is here, the drought will continue, and one of my concerns is, how long will this rate restructure continue? Long Beach saw it two years ago. What happened to DWP? They're supposedly better than Long Beach, but Long Beach saw it. Long Beach considered it. One very large source which DWP still does not concentrate on is the Hyperion Sewage Treatment Plant and the amount of water that goes out of there. Only 500 feet of pumping to get it up here. So, DWP needs to have good, practical, transparent leadership, which is currently lacking. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is Candido Maras still in the chamber? All right, then Phyllis Dougherty, are you here? Okay, great.
Phyllis Dougherty, I'm going to report to you on the Animal Services Commission meeting last Monday, so that you don't first read about it at the front page of the Daily News. They apparently found the missing money for the Spainuter vouchers, the $179,000 that they could not account for was being paid to a, an organization that had previously had a mobile van, and it was requested to be released from its obligation because it could not fulfill it. They continued to pay him, and they did not account for that money, and at the end of the year, that's the amount that was lacking from our Spainuter vouchers. This gentleman was not a participating vet and was not registered on any account for payment under this process. I understand that there's an audit being done by the controller, and I hope that you will ask for it, because if the mayor has the opportunity to cover it up, I'm sure they will do it. The other thing is that this week, you will be hearing about the sexual harassment settlement for Mr. Boakes. That is money that should be paid, should be spent on this department.
Thank you, Ms. Dougherty. Melrose Larry Green, followed by Arnold Sacks. Mr. Sacks, you'll be speaking after Mr. Green.
I'll be very quick, because I know everybody wants to go home for the weekend. I don't care what Barack Obama and Janet De Palatano say with their semantics on the word, or not using or using the word terrorism. It exists. There's a threat from Islamic fundamentalism to the city of LA. Everybody from DWP knows that DWP has been threatened, that the US bank tower was threatened to be blown up by the Al Qaeda. Well, I have to pick up the New York Times today and read that because of the ACLU lawsuit, they've got to print the methods that have been used to interrogate people that want to blow everybody up, including this city hall. I want to vomit. There is a play by Shakespeare called Much Ado About Nothing. I went to Cornell and Brandeis, I have very high SAT scores, I was valedictorian, I read the whole synopsis of the report. Quote, "It concluded the methods did not constitute torture under US law." That's from the Department of Justice.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Mr. Sacks, you're up next. Is Mr. Sacks in the chamber? All right, great. Mr. Sacks, while you're coming up, Mr. Walter Bechtel, you are the next speaker after Mr. Sacks.
Again, the public is penalized. The living wage law that was discussed in your last meeting, it's not a living wage law, it's a killing wage law. Ask yourself if it's good enough for workers of businesses, doing business with the city, why isn't it good enough for the city workers? Would the council members take $5 an hour to forego their health benefits? Would your leadership forego their health benefits for a pay raise of $5 an hour? The only voice the council can hear is your vote. The only voice they listen to is how much. Now, the legacy runners were here last week crying about the marathon. Read Tina DuPuy's editorial from 11/26 in the LA Times, and look up Council File 07-1434 from 12/1608. Ask yourselves two questions. In the editorial, the LA Marathon President, Russ Pilar, said that the switch to May was made because employees don't observe Presidents' Day. What about Sundays?
Thank you very much. Mr. Bechtel is our next speaker. Mr. Bechtel? Uh, and then after Mr. Bechtel is Loris Orif.
Oh, um, thank you. I just wanted to, I was going to say something about something else, but now that DWP got in here, I, you know, my people, like I said before, my people put in all the water here. I, I might have misquoted something about one of the Mott's. It wasn't James Mott, it was Stephen Mott and Thomas Mott. Thomas Mott's the one who married Asensio in Sepulveda, and they virtually created the city of LA here, but that's, that's my relatives going way back, and I'm more recently related to people like the Bechtals from Bechtel Over There Corporation and other people. And since you're talking about water here, it seems to me very apocryphal, all this replacement of galvanized pipes with copper pipe. Uh, you know, I turned on the water this morning, and I noticed it took several minutes for the hot water to become hot. It seems to me all that replacement of galvanides with copper is one of the main problems here.
Thank you very much. St. Orif, is there, is it, I'm sorry.
I'm representing the owner of a commercial building that was bought as a distressed property following its second foreclosure for sale by the original owner. The owner has had the building for seven years, and during the first six and a half years, was not able to find any tenant interested in renting the complete building. Recently, a tenant has been found, but the various city departments have not coordinated to enable this business to be established and obtain their required permits and necessary variances. The individual city employees have all been very helpful, as far as they are allowed to be, but the owner has heard more than once, "It's not my job to tell you how to do that, it's my job to tell you what you cannot do." The agencies the owner and the tenant have been talking to are Code Enforcement, Building and Safety, Councilman Bernard Parks's office, Planning Department, and the Community Redevelopment Agency. The lack of coordination in the rules and the application of the rules each of these departments operates under is directly resulting in preventing new businesses from starting up. This caused the city and lost business tax revenue from the owner and the tenant, reduced property taxes due to the reduced value of the building, and lost employment opportunities.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Anthony, is there a Mr. Anthony here? He's our next speaker. Following Mr. Anthony will be Stephanie Taylor, Stephanie Taylor is still here?
Well, good afternoon. It's too bad we only got a minute. Mr. Zion, I appreciate what you said about the, the coach. Here, all of you were asking him questions, and half of the questions he was asking, he was answering with, "I hope so, maybe so, I think so." They were not answers. Had he included the, the MOUs, the neighborhood councils, you would, he would have been more informed, but he's been known to leave out the constituents of all the districts, he's been known to leave without answers. He did that right here, and I can't believe you all passed this resolution, except for two of you. Uh, by the way, some good news for you folks, uh, the housing density development, the high-density housing development, um, we just found out on Wednesday that it was found to be illegal. I've told you about these illegal laws that they passed. That one was found to be illegal on Wednesday, I just found out. So we won that one. How about them pass a, a motion for SB 1185 to turn it back to the original law it was?
Thank you very much, sir, thank you. Um, I believe our next speaker is Stephanie Taylor. Stephanie Taylor? Okay, she's not in the chamber, and Miguel Luna, is Miguel Luna here? All right, not, not everyone of them is coming forward, so that will close our public comment for today. Uh, Madam Clerk, what is the next item on the agenda?
Next item, Madam President, is item number three, that was called Special For Cards.
All right, Mr. Sacks, you filled out a card on item three, so if Mr. Arnold Sacks would come forward.
And there's no action on this one, this is just replaced with a bad...
Great.
Good afternoon, Arnold Sacks. I'm concerned about the grant applications in order to meet deadlines established by the federal government to secure American Recovery and Reimbursement Act because of the duplicity that the city engages in. When the Transportation Department put out the mayor's bids, or the mayor's proposals for funding, he had on his line items $5 million for street paving in every district, but he was only going to spend $5 million for the whole program. But every district shows up as $5 million. So how does that work? It's duplicity to say you're going to get $5 million for your streets in your district, when the whole city is only going to get $5 million for all the paving, according to the program that was put together and presented in the Department of Transportation. It was never answered, and it was never considered. It was just passed on, and this is the kind of leadership that we get in government...
Thank you very much, Mr. Sacks, thank you. Thank you. All right, would you please open the roll on this item?
Madam President, there's no action required on this item.
Okay, great. What is our next item?
Uh, next item is item number four, and that was called Special For Cards, and also just for the record, the Housing Department did hold a hearing on this item and has submitted a resolution for council to adopt.
Great, all right, let's get the speakers up here. Mr. Sacks, you're already here, so why don't we take you first. Following Mr. Sacks will be Leonard Woods.
Thank you. I'm concerned about the LAHD issuing housing bonds. The airport issued, issued bonds for the, for the reconstruction and the revitalization of the Tom Bradley Terminal. But the city also issued a bond for the same work Mr. Rosendahl championship did, $950 million. $950 million by the airport, but the director of the airport in a speech to the South Bay Council of Governance only mentioned one bond issue. Recently, in the, in the Regional Council of Governance, there was discussion by somebody talking about the Orange County Transportation Corridor and a bond that had been issued. And he stated that no public funding would be used to make up the difference, even if the revenues fell short. We didn't hear anything about that, excuse me, regarding the airport, so my concern's here, the duplicity of bonds that are issued, and who ultimately ends up holding the bag when the funding is, doesn't meet, meet the requirements. Thank you.
Mr. Woods, you're our next speaker, and this, following Mr. Woods will be Thelme Perez.
Point of order, um, the, the airport is, is a proprietary department, it has its own separate rules and requirements that deal with the FAA, and it, it, it needs to be known that that's how that's paid for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Leonard Woods. Unfortunately, I'm here, I should have been on vacation, but I'm here because of item four, is that, excuse me, item four has a lot to do with the Housing Authority, Maryland Group, Mayfair, the Alexandria Housing Apartment, and Leonard Woods. For your, I don't want to come back here after they, you know, given, Mayfair gave the people $25 million, gave a Maryland, uh, Alexandria $50 million. Look at my water that's coming out of my sink. I have to either try to shave with this water, bathe with this water, and I know good and well, you peoples up there, I know y'all houses' water do not look like this to come out your sink. You are giving agilina peoples' money to a Maryland group, and they come and do a dog and pony show, and cut the ribbon, and do cosmetic work, and we got this kind of stuff coming out of our, out of our sink, what we drink. Y'all need to be more responsible with these people's taxpayers' money that y'all are giving to these peoples. I have nothing against peoples getting progress, but for we to have to drink water like this, take a bath with water like this, this is totally ridiculous. And I should have been on vacation, but I came here to make sure that y'all do not let this other $25 million go down the drain, because they still have to come back and put these type of fuses in. This money is being wasted. So would y'all please do y'all job, because I notice about what want to go with the water, it's all about y'all pocket. You do the detail, but when it comes to other people's money, you just pass it out like it's nothing, and I'm done.
Our next speaker is San Antonio Amberly. I'm sorry, Thelme Perez, and then San Antonio. Is Thelme here? Thelme is not coming forward, okay, San Antonio.
Yes, hello, I am actually, I'm actually a resident and a business owner on the block directly across from the Mayfair Hotel, and so I am an extremely troubled individual about these, this particular suggestion for using this money, public monies, for a company, a Maryland, who currently has two projects in downtown. They are irresponsible, unethical, and I don't think that they are really good custodians of these public funds by their past behavior since 2006. They've already received bond money that is supposed to be used for multiple family housing, and I would rather see this kind of money in these troubled financial times be put towards women and children, low-income housing, as opposed to, it's just below market rate, the, the term affordable housing is too loose. The neighborhood I live in has 350,000 people per square mile. It is very dense already as a residential area, and the low income of the neighborhood actually does not support what this company would probably charge. So I don't want to see the same kind of situation that has happened at the Alexandria Hotel and at the Frontier Hotel come to my neighborhood and come to where I have to do business. I have expressed this to actually the CD One's office, and have only recently been, you know, responded to within the last two days, and I feel that that is irresponsible. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Steve Diaz? Steve Diaz? Okay, Mr. Diaz is not in the chamber. Bilal Ali, are you here? Mr. Bilal Ali? The last card I have on this item is someone who signed as Amerland, but they are from LA Can. Is there someone here who is from LA Can who wants to speak on behalf of Amerland? Okay, well, then that marks the end of the cards, there are no cards, no further cards, no speakers in the queue, so Madam Clerk, if you would please open the roll on that item? Please close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Next item?
Next item is item number five, and I believe that was called special by Councilmember Weisar.
Okay, and there is one card on that, Mr. Weisar. Item five?
I did not call it special. Madam President, maybe?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, Madam President, it was Councilmember Alarcon.
Okay, Mr. Alarcon, number five, and we do have one card.
Take the card.
Okay, uh, Mr. Anthony, is there a Mr. Anthony here on item number five? Item number five for Mr. Anthony?
Did you see this motion?
Okay, I guess Mr. Anthony is no longer present. Item five is before us now.
Members, this is the continuing saga of the Children's Museum. We have staff who are here, but one of the key questions is that we are not aware that the Children's Museum has filed a bankruptcy at this point, is that correct?
That's correct.
So, we know that the, the CEO expressed before this council that that was going to happen no later than April 17th, which is today, so it may happen today. Can you tell us, whoever would be the most appropriate person to answer this, I, I understand the default notice has been sent, or a letter of default action has been sent, can, can you tell us where we are with that action and what that accomplishes?
Kevin Regan, Assistant General Manager with the Department of Recreation and Parks. And Councilman, to answer your question, yes, the Department of Recreation and Parks did send a notice of default to Children's Museum Organization, and that was done on April 10th. We cited primarily the default in that the museum will not be able to accomplish the task of completing that museum and have it operational by the, by the appropriate timelines. City Attorney may want to also give some information on that default.
I'm Wendy Liu, Deputy City Attorney with the LA City Attorney's Office. I have been in contact with both Cecilia Glassman of the CMLA and Bankruptcy Counsel for CMLA, and they advise that a petition will be filed today. It may have been already filed, you know, right about now, because last I spoke or heard from them was about a half an hour ago, when they said that they were, you know, intending to file today. The notice of default has been given, but under the bankruptcy code, when a bankruptcy petition is filed...
Hold my time, please.
Section 108B provides essentially that if an agreement gives the debtor a period... —section one oh eight B provides essentially that if an agreement gives the debtor a period of time to cure a default, and that time has not expired before the filing of the bankruptcy petition, then the trustee shall have the later of the expiration of that period or sixty days from the date of filing. In this case, it would be the later of the sixty days of filing, which would mean June sixteenth, assuming they filed today. So the trustee will have sixty days to cure the default under the bankruptcy code. And, um, you know, you had, um, some very broad questions about the process of Chapter Seven, and, you know, I, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about exactly how it will play out.
At, at this point, once, when they file their action, uh, am I correct in saying that the organization no longer has responsibility for the site?
Well, technically, yeah, I mean, yes. Uh, when the bankruptcy petition is filed by operation of law, all of the rights and equitable interests that belonged to the debtor become property of the bankruptcy estate, of which the Chapter Seven trustee will be in charge of liquidating for the benefit of creditors. And so, um, as of when they file today, it'll be the trustee that will step into the shoes of CMLA and will be the, um, legally the tenant with which the city must deal with.
Do they have, uh, responsibility to secure the facility and make sure that it doesn't deteriorate?
The trustee, yes, absolutely. The trustee is responsible for the property to the same extent that the tenant was. And, um, for that reason, uh, I believe that the trustee is, is going to find that the extreme responsibilities and high operating costs will outweigh any potential benefit of the leasehold interest.
Therefore, it might be in their interest to allow us to securitize the building?
Yes, I believe so. Um, the trustee will have the, um, the job to liquidate the, this state in a way that maximizes the assets to, to, um, for the benefit of creditors. And the standard is under eleven USC five fifty-four, um, where the trustee does a cost-benefit analysis of all rights and interests. Um, and if he or she determines that an asset or an interest is burdensome to the estate or of inconsequential value, he or she will abandon that asset to either the debtor or a possessory interest holder, such as the city in this case. So there's this constant cost-benefit analysis that's done by the trustee.
Yes.
And, um, I believe that in this case, given the, the, the cost-benefit analysis would be looking at the cost, which is extremely high, which drove the CMLA to the position that it's in, um, versus to the, the benefit of keeping this, this interest to the trustee. And there really isn't any benefit given the extreme restriction, restrictive uses in place on, on the property and the use of the building. So, um, I believe that the trustee will quickly determine that the cost-benefit analysis requires abandonment to the estate.
Okay, but, but, uh, in your analysis, legal analysis and opinion, uh, it, it would seem to be in the city's interest, uh, to acquire the property as quickly as possible in the likelihood that we're going to end up with it anyway.
Right.
And that there may be a, a period of abandonment that, uh, the, the receiver, uh, might find it is in the best interest of the, uh—
The trustee.
The trustee.
Right.
So, um, then, would it be in our interest to try to acquire the property as quickly as possible?
Well, yes, it is in our interest, and that's what we've been doing, but when— because the museum is going to be filing bankruptcy—
Hold my time, please.
—we, we, the city, have to operate within the parameters of bankruptcy code, where, you know, under eleven USC three sixty-two, there's automatic stay that comes in place. The city's not allowed to just go in and, and the property and try to take it back. There are, you know, legal protections for the bankruptcy estate to allow the trustee the time to make those, those decisions. If the trustee does not find that, you know, it's inconsequential to the estate and move to affirmatively abandon the property, the city will be able to bring a motion to compel abandonment. So that's what we're, we're working on. And I'm in constant contact with the Debtors Council and with CMLA, trying to get the information on the trustee, you know, as soon as possible. And as soon as we know, I will call the trustee and, and, and encourage, open up a line of communication, and, and hopefully the trustee will be cooperative and wanting to talk with us and, and perhaps meet with all of us, because at some point, the trustee's going to need to take physical possession of the property once he or she's appointed.
Okay, then, um, uh, with, with that presentation, uh, I think it's incumbent on us to take action. I have an amending motion that, uh, that will be circulated as soon as I sign it, but essentially—
Do it verbally?
I'll do it verbally. Um, I'm going to read the narrative as well. "Children's Museum of Los Angeles has received substantial financial assistance and land and a land lease for, uh, its facility from the City of Los Angeles. The financial assistance includes city funds from various sources, including bonds and from other sources, county and state, where the cities, the city is obligated for the funds. The CMLA intends to, or may have already filed Chapter Seven bankruptcy and liquidation today. It is imperative that the city seek control of the CMLA facility in order to protect the facility and the city and taxpayer financial investment in the facility, CMLA's only significant resource. I therefore move that the City Attorney be directed to immediately contact the attorneys for the CMLA as well as the bankruptcy trustee to pursue all legal avenues to have the city obtain control and possession of the CMLA facilities, including key security and maintenance. I further move that the CLA, CAO, and Department of General Services be instructed to develop and implement a long-term plan to secure and protect the CMLA facility. The plan should include possible short-term use by city departments or nonprofit organizations to ensure that the facility is protected."
We need a second on that?
More seconds.
Do we need a second on that?
Uh, yes, Madam President.
Do you have a second on that? Do you have a second on that, Mr. Alarcon?
I hope so. No second?
Tom?
Second.
Okay, we have a second from Mr. Labange. Thank you. That was close.
Subsequent to the vote, I would like this matter to be continued until, uh, the twenty-second. So that we can hear what happened with—
We need subsequent to the vote on the motion.
Yes.
Because this is just a report today. We weren't going to take a—Madam Clerk, if you could please explain that.
So, do you want to keep the report on the agenda and then council can adopt that motion?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so the vote we will take is on whether or not to adopt Mr. Alarcon's motion. All right, so why don't we open the roll on that? Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
And now, Mr. Alarcon has requested that that item be continued until—
The twenty-second.
Twenty-second of April?
Yes.
All right. Yep. So, Madam Clerk, if you would, continue that until April twenty-second. Thank you. All right, thank you. Next item.
Uh, next item is item number seven, and that was called special for cards.
All right, uh, we have one card from Mr. Arnold Sacks. Mr. Arnold Sacks, come on up. Clock is ticking.
Yes, good afternoon again, Arnold Sacks. Here's my concerns regarding this. The City Council and the Los Angeles Convention Center. The last time the City Council got involved in a, in a contract with the Los Angeles Convention Center concerned AEG. And here in this language, it says exclusivity. They had an exclusive right, AEG had exclusive right for the advertising on a convention center. But who did the city have their contract signed with? The LA Arena Land Company. So, my question would be is they signing, are they signing an agreement with Smart Cities Network License LP? Or are they going to be a subsidiary of Smart Cities Network LP? The city lost out on millions of dollars in revenue that they would have gotten if they had kept the contract with AEG as, as a sole proprietor, sole benefit for the exclusivity of the contract. How much money are we going to lose out on this contract? We've seen how the city operates and the City Council. Deep money, deep pockets for the developers, nothing for the public. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no speakers in the queue. Madam Clerk, would you please open the roll? Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Next item.
Uh, next item, Madam President, is in the special meeting, and, uh, do you wish to recess the regular meeting and go back to the special meeting? And there are two items in that.
Yes, we'll recess the regular meeting and go to the special meeting.
Uh, and that's item number eight, and a substitute motion has been distributed to the council members on that item.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Colleagues, um, this is a resolution where, um, we're asking that we support, uh, AB fourteen ninety-eight, um, uh, Assembly Member De Leon's bill that would prohibit ownership, possession, purchase, or receipt of a firearm from ten years from the date of a misdemeanor conviction for the following crimes: carrying a concealed weapon, possession of an assault weapon, uh, any misdemeanor where in conjunction with that misdemeanor, the convicted, the conviction carries a gang enhancement penalty. Uh, basically what this is, is we're, we're, uh, increasing the list of crimes, uh, that would then prohibit someone from, uh, owning, uh, a firearm within ten years of that, of that crime. And I, I think that the point is, um, you know, if you, if you commit some of these misdemeanors, you're already showing that you have bad judgment, um, and we're trying to figure out a way to keep guns out of hands of people who have already committed some misdemeanors. So, uh, is there someone here from the Police Department that would, would like to at least quickly come forward and, uh, tell us why this is important, this, to support this bill in terms of, uh, how it helps you? Sure, come on, come on up here. On how it, um, affects your ability to do your job.
Hi, I'm Captain Justin Eisenberg, Gang and Narcotics Division.
Yes.
Got Detective Three, Rick Tompkins, he's in charge of our gun unit. He's going to give you some insight into how this could help us with our investigations.
I'm Peter Shute with the City Attorney's Gang.
Okay.
Um, again, we've had, uh, numerous cases, uh, involving, uh, one twenty-two eighty, which is the possession of the assault weapon, one twenty-two-five, and one twenty-thirty-one, where misdemeanors have been—where misdemeanors have been, uh, issued to the suspects or the dependents. Uh, one case in particular, which is, is near to my heart, is about two thousand and four, we made an arrest in the City of Los Angeles for gun trafficking. Um, subsequent search warrants resulted in the recovery of over four hundred and fifty guns. Uh, the case has been, went on for several years, and the suspect was eventually given a, a felony conviction of one-two-eight-eight-zero, one-two-two-eight-zero, and then subsequently dropped down to a misdemeanor filing on that, which allowed him, or would have allowed him, to get his guns back at some point. Um, one twenty-two-five and one twenty-thirty-one are the same issues.
So this will close that loophole?
Yes, it would, and we actually look forward to seeing this come into place.
Now, um, I stood, uh, actually with Councilmember Jack Weiss when we introduced, uh, this resolution, but, uh, a couple of months ago, it included burglary, um, as one of the misdemeanor crimes that would then prevent someone from, uh, having a gun. That was subsequently taken out of, uh, the amended bill. Can somebody tell me why that happened?
Uh, the answer, uh, basically, I don't, I'm not, uh, I wasn't personally involved in that particular decision, but I understand that the goal was to include the firearm-related crimes in those that were gang-related, and, uh, there may have been some issues to—
Okay.
—how connected the four-five-nine was to that.
Four-five-nine being—don't speak of it in that kind of a way.
I'm sorry, the burglary. Uh, just to point out, the four-five-nine, which is burglary—
It's two o'clock on a Friday afternoon.
The, the residential four-five-nine, which is residential burglary, is a felony in all circumstances.
Right.
And there's a number of them that can be a misdemeanor.
I see. Okay. So what we have before you is an amended, uh, motion today that, uh, does not include burglary, but apparently now also includes, uh, possession of a concealed loaded weapon.
That's correct.
So, colleagues, I think we've heard from, uh, those who are out there trying to make our streets safer, that, uh, this is a bill that we should support, so, uh, if we support it, uh, then can we send it forth with to the mayor?
Thank you very much, Ms. Han. Mr. Zein is our next speaker.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon. If this were to pass, we're talking about a state law, we're not talking about local ordinance, we're talking about a state law.
That's correct. That's my understanding.
And if it were to pass, how does this compare to some of the other laws that we've been successful with to prevent gun violence throughout not only Los Angeles but the state?
Uh, if I may, uh, this is actually very similar to a law that, uh, we passed in two thousand and three, AB three nineteen, that was sponsored by Assemblyman Fromer, which basically increased the list of offenses that would result in a prohibition. Uh, that particular, uh, bill affected only those adjudicated as minors for certain crimes. And that basically included, uh, twelve oh twenty-five, twelve oh thirty-one, and twelve oh thirty-four, but it didn't, I don't think it included twelve, uh, two eighty, which is the assault weapon ban. But, uh, what resulted from that is that, uh, any time a juvenile is adjudicated with any of those additional crimes, then they would have a prohibition until they are thirty years old. Uh, most of the crimes that are misdemeanors that are included for adults have been assault of crimes, two forty, two forty-two, two forty-five, assault with a deadly weapon. Uh, what we're adding now is quite reasonable and logical that we're adding crimes, if you've committed a crime with a firearm, then that too will prohibit you as an adult for ten years, uh, from, from being able to legally purchase and acquire a firearm.
Ownership, possession, purchase of, uh, an ex-felon or a misdemeanor, um, certain additional misdemeanor convictions couldn't have any possession of a gun?
Certain enumerated ones, that's correct. Any felon, no matter what the crime.
Under current law?
Under current law.
This will expand it to certain misdemeanors.
And under current law as well, uh, there's certain enumerated misdemeanors that are mostly assaultive, and what this is doing is adding those crimes that Councilwoman, uh, Han was indicating, which is carrying a loaded firearm, carrying a concealed firearm, assault weapon, twelve-two-eighty, and any crime, uh, any misdemeanor crime that results in the finding of, of, uh, one eighty-six-twenty-two, the gang enhancement, to be true.
Now, you mentioned loaded firearm. What I see here, it says firearm, and knowing law enforcement and the tragedies that have occurred where officers have been shot by suspects, um, is it clearly stated firearm or does it have to be a loaded firearm? Because an officer doesn't know. They assume it's loaded when an individual points it at them or an individual is taken to custody, that it is loaded, but in fact, what this says is received a firearm. So, to my interpretation, would be any kind of firearm, whether it's loaded or not.
That's correct. Well, it has to satisfy one of these crimes, twelve oh twenty-five, which is carrying a concealed firearm on your person or in the car. It does not have to be loaded.
It doesn't have to be loaded, correct. So if an individual with these misdemeanor convictions were to have a firearm, it's not loaded, you're still in violation.
If it's concealed, yeah.
If it's concealed. Uh, and the other question is, do we have any state legislators that are working on this particular category to enhance? I mean, the tragedy that occurred in Oakland with the four officers, uh, the tragedies were, the person shouldn't have had a gun anyway, he was an ex-con, on, uh, I think on probation or parole, one or the other. Are there any legislators who are sensitive to this, who would want to sponsor and carry it through? Because we can do everything we can here, but if they don't push it up there, it doesn't go anywhere. Are we working with anyone up in Sacramento?
I believe there are sponsors that are already coordinating this. I think De Leon is, is the one who's entertaining this particular, uh, motion, I mean, this bill, at this point.
Because it's our go, it's our role to give law enforcement the tools to do the job and protect society, and this is something I totally completely support. I just want to make sure we can get something done with it. I know the assault weapons ban doesn't look like it's going to be expanded. According to comments from the president, it doesn't look like Congress is going to move in that direction, but anything we can do to enhance safety for the general public and our police officers is critical.
Well, I, I know that Councilman Weiss, uh, is working very closely with a number of people, especially, uh, Assemblymember De Leon, uh, on this bill, and, and there are, I'm sure, others that are ready to support.
Okay, because sometimes we see things and they float and nothing ever happens. This is something that's critical, that we need to, uh, make sure we can get it passed and implemented in the books to make, uh, make it a safer place for all.
Absolutely, Captain.
Captain, thank you for being here.
Thank you. Mr. Caesar.
Ms. Han?
Well, thank you. Um, I appreciate this, and I just, you know, wanted to stand again in support of this. Uh, many people know, uh, one of the things I've taken on very seriously is the idea of gang violence in Los Angeles. Uh, you know, we have, uh, more gangs and more gang members now than we, uh, did, you know, over twenty years ago when we started our so-called War on Gangs, and I'm a big believer, as you all know, in prevention. Uh, but I think what this does, uh, is make sure that we can keep guns out of the hands of, uh, folks who are going to end up, uh, involved in gangs and, uh, gang-related activity. It makes it a lot worse when they have a gun in their hand, uh, and they're involved in gangs. So what this does is keep the guns out of hands of people who have already begun to, uh, commit misdemeanors, uh, commit crimes that show, again, a lack of judgment and And I want to keep the guns out of their hands so that ultimately we can really protect our law enforcement officers and particularly protect innocent people in the streets of Los Angeles who come under fire by these vicious gang members. So I ask for your eye support on this. Thank you.
For Councilman Zine's sake, this bill has been set on April 21st in Assembly Public Safety, and De León is the author.
Right. Yes. That's why we're doing this today, because it's going to be heard in their committee on Tuesday.
Right.
Okay. Madam Clerk? Oh, no.
Mr. Zine?
There was one more thing in committee. We talked about, there was something regarding robbery or burglary or something. I made some comment about, we wanted to research that to additional, to expand it. Were you there, Peter?
I was there. Apparently, some things were done that I was not involved with, but burglary is now not on the list of those crimes that would be proposed in this bill.
I was questioning why burglary, which is a felony, robbery is a felony. I don't know about misdemeanor burglary, if there is a misdemeanor burglary. It's not a wobbler. But I was curious why we put burglary in there and not robbery? If we're putting a felony...
Well, robbery cannot be a misdemeanor.
Can burglary?
And burglary can be, if it's not residential. So robbery wouldn't belong there only because it's automatically a prohibited offense because it's a felony. On burglary...
What kind of misdemeanor burglary do you have? I know there's theft, but I've never heard of misdemeanor burglary.
Burglary can be, it can be a commercial burglary. It can be a petty theft, where someone walks into a store with an empty bag, and we can prove that they're intent when they walk in.
That's burglary.
That could be a burglary. It's not often charged that way, but it can be.
With intent to commit that...
You have to prove the intent. That's right, as they enter the store.
Okay. So you folks, LAPD, you happy with it?
Yes, sir. We're happy with it, sir.
If you're happy, I'm happy.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, let's stop on a happy note. Thank you.
It's a happy day.
It's a happy day. Thank you very much. No further speakers in the queue. Madam Clerk, would you please open the roll on that item? Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Thank you. Next item?
Next item, Madam President, is item number nine, and that was called Special for Cards.
All right, I have one card in here on item nine from Dr. Clyde Williams. Dr. Williams.
Change of hats. And Dr. Clyde Williams, 4115 Barrett Road, El Sereno. In review of this particular resolution, it is not clear as to whether it would also apply to taxpayers of the retail sales tax. A lot of the small businesses in El Sereno, Lincoln Heights, Boyle Heights, and even in Highland Park are suffering right now due to too many taxes, too many improvements, and no way of paying them because the economy is going down. As taxpayers, those usually go to the owners of the facilities, not to the actual businesses. So it was just a question as to clarification, will this apply to small businesses with less than 10 people employed? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Williams. Mr. Sacks, you are our next speaker. And since this is a special meeting, you'll be given one minute.
Actually, since it would be a special meeting, I should get two minutes. But nevertheless, thank you for straightening out the fact that the city detectives who acted illegally by suppressing the rape DNA kits was not a state law. I was wondering if it is a municipal ordinance that would be considered by the city council, and they would look into it before, as to what occurred prior to the federal government changing the policy and putting the testing into the hands of the LAPD? Because if it's not a municipal code and it's not a state law, then evidently they did was illegal. And if anybody suffered because of that, they should sue the crap out of the city.
He is not on topic and should be warned.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sacks. All right, no further speaker cards on that item. There are no speakers in the queue. Please open the roll on that item. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Next item?
Madam President, and the order on that goes over for next week.
All right, I believe that item eight should go forthwith.
And that concludes the special meeting. Do you wish to adjourn that and go back to the regular meeting?
Yes, please. Let's do that.
On the regular meeting, council has motions for posting...
And before we finally adjourn, Ms. Garcia, I did not have a card in here for you, but you did file, prepare a card, which the officer brought up. You can have one minute for public comment, although I did close public comment, but it'll be limited to one minute.
Thank you. I wanted to very much thank Janice Hahn and Dennis Zine for their no vote on the first measure. And I wanted them to know that your constituents and neighborhood council people are very much grateful to you for that. You listened to us, you heard us, and you voted the way you spoke. And that in itself is a tremendous feat for everyone. And relative to, I don't have too much time, but relative to the recession and what is happening, to the economic status in our community, it's important that you would have realized that this 25% increase that will occur because of the tiering is something that could have been avoided, or we could have worked with it a little bit better. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, are there any other items on the desk?
Yes, council has motions for posting a referral.
Okay, motions are posted and referred.
And there's an excuse on the desk. Councilmember Weiss requests a excuse Tuesday, April 21st. For city business, that meets council policy.
All right. No objection?
And that clears the desk.
All right, members, are there any announcements? Mr. Rosendahl, you have an announcement?
Just quickly, one of my Mar Vista residents, Marty Rubin, called me and corrected me, which is right. The Mar Vista Green Garden Showcase will be on Sunday, April 26th. That's not this Sunday, but a week from this coming Sunday. And go to the website, marvistagreengardshowcase.blogspot.com, and you'll see all the houses that are on it and the tour that will be at 2:00 in the afternoon, a week from Sunday on April 26th. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Are there any other announcements, members? Oh, Mr. Zine, do you have an announcement?
Yes, I do. A couple items. Tonight at 6:30, Van Nuys Gang Reduction Youth Development Office Open House at the 14410 Sylvan, at the Browdy Building, Van Nuys, in the city of Van Nuys, Van Nuys and Sylvan. Also tomorrow, a number of events. I'll go through them quickly. YMCA, West Valley YMCA is having a pancake breakfast. If you come by my booth, you get all the pancakes you want for $3. Eat your heart out for $3. Also, tomorrow, we have Reseda Neighborhood Council, a graffiti town hall. Everyone's invited, Reseda High School. And that's going to be at 2:00, Reseda High School, a Reseda Neighborhood Council graffiti town hall, trying to eradicate graffiti in the community. And on Sunday, a very nice event takes place, and that is Pierce College Farm Walk, 9:30 till 4:00. Pierce College opens up. All the folks can come by with their families and go through Pierce College and all the wonderful activities at Pierce College. That's 10:00, Sunday, at Pierce College in the San Fernando Valley. And good luck to all those in the Grand Prix, tomorrow Toyota Grand Prix. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And if we can all rise, we're adjourning motions. And if you wouldn't mind, I'd just like to start and ask all of us to remember... Oh, you have an announcement. Mr. Alarcon has an announcement.
I'm sorry. I just want to announce that Panorama City Recreation Center Community Car Show will be occurring on April 18th, tomorrow, at 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. This is organized by Wreckin Parks and my office, and co-sponsored by the Premier Car Club. This may possibly be the first car show ever held at Panorama Recreation Center, used to be known as Chase Park. There will be 75 or more cars participating. They will have music, live entertainment, a few concession stands. All the proceeds will go to the Panorama Recreation Center Teen Club. The event is free to the community. If you have any questions, please call Kim Weldon at 818-893-3401, or Abel Perez, who I used to counsel when he was not necessarily doing productive things in the community, but now is working for us at the city and doing great with Wreckin Parks, at 818-756-8189. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Alarcon. I wanted us all to sign on to this adjourning motion in memory of longtime West Hollywood City Councilmember Saul Guarillo, who passed away after a sudden illness. Okay, Mr. Rosendahl, you can add on to that. Some of us may have gotten the email on this, but he passed away on the 16th of April, surrounded by family and friends at Cedar Sinai Medical Center. Councilmember Guarillo served on the West Hollywood City Council for an amazing 19 years. He was elected to the West Hollywood City Council in April 1990, and he served as mayor of West Hollywood for three terms, and he was reportedly one of the oldest elected officials in the United States. Now, a press release was put out by the West Hollywood current mayor, Jeff Prang, who said on behalf of their city council, "They are saddened by the loss of our friend and colleague." He was an American original, and I know many of us have met him over the years and enjoyed his company and his hearty spirit and his just devotion to public service. Mr. Mayor Prang said that he was plain-spoken, principled, and relentless fighter for the issues and causes he held dear. And his life was defined by service to his country. And council member had been a wounded veteran of World War II, and took his service to the city council, championing the needs of seniors and those most in need. And Mayor Prang was quoted as saying, "His mark on the city is indelible, and his absence will be felt for years to come." And I saw Saul at an event, oh, maybe four or five months ago, and he was just out there, just really enjoying himself, enjoying what he did, had such a zest for life. And he was a wonderful person, and I think we'll all want to sign on to that, if I'm correct. Am I correct? Okay, all members. Okay, great. So we'll go, Mr. Rosendahl, why don't you jump in here on this one?
I've known Saul for a long time. When he first ran for office, of course, I did the debates and the forums and had him on, and we stayed very close over the years. He was a true community-spirited guy. He did represent the seniors, though, in a very dramatic, positive way. He was 90 years old when he passed, so there is life after 65 for us. And frankly, he showed that we can all be engaged until the moment we leave. You know, he joined the Coalition for Economic Survival, a tenants' rights group in 1983. Three years later, he became part of its steering committee, an advocate for rent control and affordable housing. Guarillo was also named to the West Hollywood Community Housing Corporation Board of Directors. One of the things we identified with, we were both veterans, you know, and he was instrumental in the creation of the city's Veteran Memorial Park at Holiday Park in 2003. You know, he grew up in New York in Hell's Kitchen. He served in the Army as a medic during World War II. His wife preceded him in passing in 1997. I know the whole city of West Hollywood is in mourning, and we in the city of Los Angeles share that bereavement. And he was a great leader. May he rest in peace.
Thank you, Ms. Rosendahl. Any other adjourning motions? Mr. Alarcon?
I'm very saddened to adjourn in memory of Sister Jane McGlory, who passed away surrounded by her loved ones on Wednesday, April 15, 2009, just a week short of her 77th birthday after a long and courageous battle with cancer. Sister McGlory was born on April 22, 1932, in Los Angeles to John and Eve Bragg. She attended local Los Angeles schools, graduating from Dorsey High School. She came to Pacoima in 1958, where she married Albert and started her family. She was a Los Angeles County Sheriff for 25 years. Sister McGlory was the founder of the Pacoima Community Youth Cultural Center. She served on the Board of Directors for 23 years and as chair of the board for 15 years to the Boys and Girls Club of San Fernando Valley. She was also on the Board of Pledgeable Senior Citizens via and a member of the Seventh Day Adventist Church of Pacoima. For over 15 years, Sister McGlory spearheaded the annual Thanksgiving dinner, serving over 2,000 meals each Thanksgiving for the needy of the San Fernando Valley at the Seventh Day Adventist Church. She served as a commissioner with Los Angeles County, serving as vice president of the Los Angeles County Probation Commission, vice president of the Los Angeles County Housing Authority, and member of the Los Angeles County Parole Commission. In 1979, she was awarded the Thomas Jefferson Award from the American Institute of Public Service in Washington, D.C. And in 1989, she was recognized by KMBC Spirit of Southern California Program. In 1991, she was named Pioneer Woman of the Seventh Council District by then-council member Ernani Bernardi. Sister McGlory would state her main goal in life is to help our youth and people of all ages and ethnicity who are less fortunate to live better lives, free from drugs and crime, and to help them live productive lives and to know our Creator. She was a great wife, mother, grandmother, great-grandmother, community activist, and friend. I want to share with you that the first time I ran for office, I remember, I'll never forget, going to her house and seeing about half a dozen signs for me and a half a dozen signs for the other guy. And so I knocked on the door and I said, you know, I was her son.
You introduced yourself?
I introduced myself, of course, Mr. Barnes. I introduced myself as the other guy. No, I'm just kidding. But I introduced myself, and I was speaking to her son, and I said, "Do any of these signs reflect your opinion?" And he said, "Well, it depends on what you say." And we had a long conversation. And the long and the short of it was that Jane McGlory, I believe, voted for the other guy, but when I was elected, she became a very dear supporter and friend and was supportive of all our efforts, including things like the community redevelopment area project that is emanating great things for the Northeast Valley. She was tough. She was a former cop, sheriff, if you will, conservative orientation, a very close friend to Michael Antonovich. But she was a true community servant and cared deeply for the community of Pacoima. And I'm going to miss her because it was always nice to pick up the phone and ask her opinion on things. She was always very pleased to give them to you. Her family, she, obviously, by the way, those signs were from all the people that lived in the house, from different family members who had different opinions about that particular election. But she will be sorely missed. She was a great lady for representing Pacoima, and I hope to have an opportunity to recognize her in some other way in the near future.
Thank you. Any other adjourning motions? Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, we adjourn in the memory of Richard L. Sully Sullivan, born in January 1931 in Inglewood, appointed to the LAPD on October 12, 1953. He worked several assignments in his first six years on the job, then promoted to sergeant, and was assigned to Wilshire detectives in 1960. There, he worked in the robbery squad for the next eight years, where he participated in numerous arrests and convictions, several hundred armed robbers, and more than a dozen murderers. After eight years in the robbery squad, he was assigned to Organized Crime Intelligence Division, where he handled mafia and other organized crime cases for the next 12 years until he retired from the LAPD in June of 1980. After 27 years of dedicated service to LAPD, he spent 11 years also as assistant chief of security at Universal Studios. He retired to McKinleyville, California with his lovely wife, Liz, lived in an oceanfront home where he wanted to retire, until he died on May 14 this year, just a week ago, with his wife, Liz, at his side. Sully leaves two children, Mike, also an LAPD now-retired police officer, and daughter Cheryl, five grandchildren, four great-grandchildren. A memorial in his honor will be given at the LAPD Police Academy, 1880 North Academy Drive, on Tuesday at 10:00 a.m. May you live...
Thank you very much. Any other adjourning motions? Mr. Zine would like to second that? Okay, great. All right, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?